Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4, there's six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Perick. Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Iraquin.
Present.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Start off the pledge of allegiance. At this point, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, seen none. We can't do the resolutions now?
Is he on the agenda for today?
Yeah, he's on there for seven days.
Okay. Okay. First case is, uh, application twenty-two colon O-two Hassan, one eighty-eight Edwards Road. Are you present?
He's not here.
He's not here?
He's not here yet.
Okay, let's call case, um, twenty-two colon thirty-six Ricardo Chow, five Old Chester Road, C variance, constructed one-story addition. Please come forward.
Sir, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony about the provide before the board the true self you got? And for the record, state your name.
Uh, my name is Jeff Schlech.
And you're providing architect?
I'm the architect.
Is your, uh, client gonna testify at all or not? Is your client gonna testify?
Uh, only if there's any household, though.
Alright, so I'll just, I'll swear. Sir, if you could break, stand please. You swear or affirm the testimony you got to give before the board the true self you got? And for the record, you are Ricardo Chow, C.H.A.U.
Yes, sir.
You're the owner of the property?
Yes.
And are all your licenses are in full force and theft?
Yes, they are.
And you've been qualified even before this board or other boards?
State your jersey license, I've been qualified.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the architect has been qualified.
Okay.
And so.
So we're looking for, uh, impervious coverage, um, variance of four point one four percent, correct?
Four point two nine, yeah.
Four point two nine?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this says four thirty, four point four one four.
Forty-four point two nine, as we, four thirty is required.
You wanna explain what we're gonna, what's happening, or what you're gonna do?
Sure. The, the project, uh, is quite simply a single-story addition, uh, basically a, uh, a dayroom, one-story addition out the back. Well, this place, uh, an existing patio that's there, um, and, uh, so then there'll be some improvements associated with it to, uh, modify the, the existing patio to connect with the deck and the, uh, this dayroom. Uh, the dayroom is, uh, a need for the client, uh, has elderly relatives, uh, sister and her husband, the husband is, um, essentially wheelchair-bound, he's, uh, has to, uh, can't move around on steps and things like that, and he has need of, uh, regular visits from home health care aides for physical therapy and the sort. So this, uh, proposal is for room accommodations for, um, for, for them.
So it's a bedroom?
Uh, so the, the, the project is that's the, uh, conversion of the existing family room to the bedroom, and then the addition is for the dayroom, which will be utilized for, uh, the, the couple for their day for, you know, eating and, and TV and working. But then also, uh, a portion of it is gonna be dedicated for physical therapy. So he has, uh, um, health aides that come in and run physical therapy and various things. So we have a, a small, uh, sink and a counter area for, you know, uh, sanitation and cleaning up and that sort.
We're not proposing a kitchen down there, or stove?
No, no.
Or dishwasher? None of that?
No, no kitchen.
We would, uh, that would be in a resolution that it could not be converted into, um... No problem. You know, what you want is a place for your in-laws, and you're not looking to create a two-family house, is that correct? Okay.
Chairman, there's just a note here.
Mm-hmm.
That says they should discuss the wet bar, so not create a two-family dwelling? That's just...
I think I was, what I was talking about...
Okay.
I can't, I can't believe a sink...
Right.
Would create a two-family house. You'd have to have, that's why I asked about the, uh...
Okay.
And so I asked about the stove and, you know...
Kitchen.
All the, the cooking and everything is gonna happen in the main kitchen, the space predominantly for their day use, but then the extra provision for the home health aide to come in and do that.
And it's also open to the rest of the house, too, correct? It's not...
It is open to the rest of the house, uh, there's a single means to get into it, uh, and there's been discussion as far as the physical therapy area, uh, there are a couple machines, uh, sitting, uh, at the, uh...
Bike?
Bike, but it's sitting, you know, it's a sitting bike, and, uh, he may move some of his equipment in there to supplement it as well.
You're not, you're not making any alterations to the main home to provide access for the, uh, parents into the main living area? Doesn't look like it's very handicapped.
No, uh, we, uh, I'm sorry, uh, we are, uh, converting the house back over in the full back, so we can fit the shower. Oh, no, that's part, that's part of the alteration, the family room.
Mm-hmm.
The family room, converting to bedroom.
What I'm, what I'm talking about, you basically need stairs to get from the new addition to the existing house.
Corrected.
So are you gonna do anything to make it handicapped accessible?
For the rest of the house?
Yeah.
Now, the intention was...
You just said they're gonna go up there and eat.
No, 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 although, it, his wife, he and his wife will make the meals and bring them down to him. Through the development of that initiation of the project, there was some discussion about where this should be located, um, and the final conclusion was that it really needs to be accurate, they are not very mobile, and giving them the, the dayroom space is gonna be adequate for their day-to-day living, um, and so the decision was to really focus on that. So, so to your point, yes, they would be...
I mean, the word is not correct, isolated, but that's where they're gonna stay.
That's where they're gonna stay.
They're not gonna have any real access to the main part of the house.
Correct.
Have you given any consideration?
Consideration to, um, alterations to the interior of the existing residence to make it fully accessible.
Yeah.
Uh, the amount of space that was required for a ramp to mitigate the split level is...
There's other things besides ramps, of course.
The house, the entrance to the house is at street level.
Yeah, right.
So there's a foyer.
Right.
And, and the foyer will lead into this conversion.
Yeah, that's not the one I'm talking about. I'm talking about your family going from the new addition into the existing house to be part of the family, sit around watching TV, or whatever it might be. You've got stairways...
I need you to speak into the microphone.
Essentially, I think, uh, if I can speak, uh, the dayroom is gonna supplement that family room that is otherwise being displaced, that they're going to take advantage of and, and provide the social interaction.
So the dayroom is the exercise and becomes the new family room.
Yeah.
Any other questions by the board?
So is there, with the proposed addition, there's gonna be an entrance from that new patio to get to this addition?
Yes.
Around the back?
Uh, from, directly from, uh, we have slid doors, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none, seen none. Just, there's nothing else you wanna add, is there? It's a simple, this is a simple request, and a very de minimis request of a few percentage of impervious coverage. Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application, in support of the application? I hear none and see none. Uh, someone give us a couple of brief words, it's a, it's, um, it's a family need?
Yeah, this is, uh...
Go ahead.
This is needed for the family expansion and helping the family, extended family, and, uh, it, it upliftment of the property, too, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, somebody frame a resolution so we can move on.
Sure. Application twenty-two colon thirty-six Ricardo Chow, five, um, Old Chester Road, lot four ninety-two, lot fourteen, zone R three, recommend granting a C variance to construct a one-story addition and patio contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen. Seconded.
Any discussion? Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
I just have a question. The resolutions can specifically say that...
No second.
Not a two-family house?
Yeah, the kitchen, yes.
There'll be a open living situation as far as the, uh, hearing.
You got that? You hear yes?
I mean, here a yes.
Did you call me, uh...
Yes.
A yes?
And did you call me? I did not hear you.
Result is a variance is granted, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you see, uh, is this...
He's not here now.
You know, I watched about twenty minutes of that game.
Are we off the record now?
We're off the record?
He doesn't stride into the ball.
We should be.
He just...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I mean, do we want...
He has a little...
Do we have anything else to do with this meeting, uh?
We do have another person, he's not here.
The first case.
Hassan. Hassan, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll take a break and either at seven-thirty we start the new...
Okay.
Meeting, or we, uh...
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hassan, you're looking for a variance to construct a new two-story, two thousand three hundred eighty-two square foot, single-family dwelling with attached garage. This is gonna be at one eighty-eight Edwards Road. You have, uh, a requirement for a hundred feet lot width, hundred-foot lot width, you only have eighty-four point two, and you're looking for a driveway setback of three feet where five feet is allowed. So why don't you tell us about what you're doing here? Is this gonna be a house you're gonna live in, or you're... You're gonna live in the house, okay? And, um...
You can sit down if you choose.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Tell us what, tell us what the house is gonna look like, we'll be in, in, uh, line with the other houses, you know, the houses on block, is it similar, or tell us a little bit about it.
It's actually gonna be a little bigger than the...
Speak into the microphone.
It's gonna be a little bigger than the houses in the neighborhood. The house I'm, I'm looking to build is thirty-three hundred square feet, thirty-two hundred and change, and, uh, uh, and it's gonna bring the value for the rest of the houses in this area high. Right now, front house is a very, very bad-shaped house, and, uh, I'm keep on having trouble fixing it. It doesn't have a basement, and it's very hard to keep up.
Is there a house now that, there now?
There is a house now, yeah.
So you're gonna, you're gonna demolish that house?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and build a more contemporary-looking...
Yes, new construction or something.
And you're not asking for any side yard setbacks, or rear yard, or front yard setbacks?
Not, not really, because my property is very long, I have about two acres lot.
You have a two-acre lot?
I have two acres land.
That looks like a bowling alley.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is a bowling alley, actually, yeah.
Yeah, you could put bowling alleys in there, that would be a great idea. So, um, and the driveway, um, in order for it to make sense, you need that two feet, uh, two-foot, um, adjustment?
Right, because I'm trying to have a, like, half-circled driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, the trouble is Edwards Road is a busy road, so for me to build a straight driveway is gonna be very hard to come out, especially my parents gonna live with me, my dad is, like, aged, you know, so either I need to be a ground guy for him to pull out from the single driveway, so that's why I was proposing to have a half-circular driveway, easier to get in and out.
So how, this, the size of your house, is because it's gonna be two or three families, your parents are gonna be living with you?
No, it's a single-family house.
For me?
It's a single-family house.
Single-family?
Yeah, yeah.
One kitchen?
One kitchen, yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
I have a question. The driveway, there's no detail here, you have to coordinate that, road openings with the, um...
Yes, with the county, I have the...
Attached engineering department. Any changes, uh, for the utilities, or are you gonna maybe reuse with the now?
Well, I, when I gonna demo the house, I have to disconnect the existing electric service and existing gas service. That's the only way I can able to demo the house and able to build a new one, but I gonna put exactly the same side of service back in. My current service is two hundred amps, so I'm gonna have another two hundred amp service in there.
You know, as far as the, uh, water service or sanitary lateral things, if there's any reason or need to open up the street, or replace the, uh, the quality of the sidewalk, if it needs repair, I would coordinate those issues with the engineering department.
Yes, I would, yes.
That, that's all.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any driveways next to you?
Uh, there is no driveway, I'm right next to the school.
You're right, oh, okay. There we go, I know.
Yeah, I'm right, right, next to the Rockway.
There's no other, right, you know, other houses?
No other houses, no, no.
Any other question? Any other questions?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
Uh, nothing.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. Um, comment? Simple?
I think it's relatively straightforward. De minimis, number one. Number two, to actually upgrade the area and, uh, if you have much family, have home, and, uh, so I'll be supporting the application.
Someone frame a resolution so we can move on?
Application twenty-two colon zero-two Hirfan Hassan.
Yes.
One eighty-eight Edward Road, block number six ninety-eight, lot number thirty-one, zone R D S T, to issue or grant C variance to construct a new two-story, single-family dwelling with attached garage contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column three, and section four thirty dash two seventy-five, ten.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we'll memorialize this in, uh, a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
And then you'll be able to be free to pick up your papers. You'll get, you'll get words from Nora when it's...
Okay.
Papers are done, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Take care and have a...
And if you're late again, you won't get approved.
I seen people standing outside, I thought, you know, good part of it. Thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, love.
Motion to adjourn?
Some move. Second.
There a second? I heard a second.
Second.
Hold in favor?
I, mine.
Opposed?
Go ahead. You're good.
I'm here. Announcement is made that, that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Mazzarella.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairman Iraquin.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
Okay, we did the pledge of allegiance at the seven o'clock meeting, so we will, not go with that, so we're gonna go right into resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Any member of the public has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none, seen none. Okay, uh, zoom auto. Someone like to move zoom auto? Somebody voted in favor?
Where's the, uh, the resolution?
Here.
Oh, application nineteen colon zero-three Zoom Auto Group, three-five-two-five Route forty-six, block one thirty-eight point one, lot one, zone B two, granted D variance for an expansion of used car, for used car sales and storage from twenty-five, but that's not right, ninety-one.
It's not right, ninety-one is not right.
It was fifty-five.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
Not as resolution rate.
What's the actual resolution rate?
It should be fifty-three.
It's, it's just a summary that's wrong. Okay.
Well, it's probably from the original application.
Okay.
You got it? I'm not on the table. No.
Mr. Stone, now maybe you can clarify for us?
I believe it's fifty-three with the two handicapped parking spaces for a total of fifty-five.
Fifty-five. That's the number.
Fifty-five.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
What was that?
Yes, I really liked it, yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
Application twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-one, seventy-four.
There are different people who can...
There are different...
Aren't they the same people?
No.
No, I'm sorry, okay. Big, I see, okay, so application twenty-two, twenty-five, someone wanna move that one?
So moved, Jaskowitz.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan. Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Okay.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Uh, yes. Application twenty-one colon seventy-four, twenty-one colon one hundred. Twenty-one, one hundred again?
Whoop, nope, that was in error.
Happy pause on it there.
Yeah, both are happy pause.
Happy pause is, um, to, um...
That was withdrawn.
Withdraw.
Motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal.
All right, let's do twenty-one, seventy-four. Two seventy-three, new road.
So moved. Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan. Oops, there again. Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Okay, now, application twenty-one colon one hundred, I need a motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal.
So moved. Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mazzarella.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Willins.
Yes.
Iraquin.
Yes. Okay, so, I see some correspondence here, but this all pertains to applications, doesn't it?
Yes.
There's two other resolutions that are on our main calendar, are we doing those?
We have, we have these two, we have Parth.
Consagra and...
And New Road.
New Road.
Can we just do this?
Can we do those, Nora?
Yeah, wait, wait, wait.
We did that.
And New Road?
Yeah.
New Road, okay. It is listed twice.
It's listed, yeah, right, very good. Okay, so we can go into the agenda, Nora?
Yes, we can, however, the first item or team is twenty-two, twenty-one, uh, needs a new hearing date.
So what's the new date?
I don't have it yet, I have to look at it, there was a notice issue.
Do they have to renotice?
Yes, they have to renotice.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything with it?
No.
Okay, pause.
Pause, pause device? Twenty-two.
Oh, man. Where's my pen?
Don't worry about it. No, I'm all right. Here, okay.
That's a good pen, so.
All right, so let's call, so that takes care of twenty-two, twenty-one. And application twenty-two, twenty-three, Krishna Reina, nine Ronald Road, C variance to install a patio.
Are you gonna testify?
I, if I'm able to, I'm here to file for the...
All right, so, sir, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about the board the true self you got, and for the record, you're Krishna Reina, R-N-A, you're the...
Ariana.
And you're the owner of the subject property. Could you stand, Mr. Wall? Raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about the board the true self you got, and for the record, you're the...
Contractor.
Contractor.
You got his name?
Thomas Walton, A.R.
Thank you, you're sworn.
So you're proposing...
How about it?
You're proposing, um, I'll get the sergeant-at-arms over there. Very good of you, thank you.
Very good of you, thank you.
Okay, you, uh, you have a side yard, you want, you're allowed six foot feet, fi- six foot, you're proposing five foot, seven inches. Impervious coverage, you're, uh, permitted forty, you're looking for fifty. So, tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it the way you do, you want to do it.
Um, first of all, I thank you all for taking time to hear my deal. Um, the reason I'm doing this is because my backyard door, uh, entrance door is a bit of water, so it puddles up in the heavy rain and snow, or even light rain, to be honest. Uh, and it, uh, water is entering the house. So remedy, remedy at the moment, I have currently hit a summer cell pump on there, to kind of, uh, take care of the water situation. And also, the whole, uh, backyard is sloped towards my door, so water just comes there without any doing anything. Uh, so the tackle that, I'm trying to install a patio and then drainage work to do. So kind of take, take care of the water and then, uh, also gives us a place where we can kind of relax and have time with family and enjoy also.
So, um... Have you seen, uh, Mr. Liza's, uh, memo? Regard, the town engineer's memo regarding your project? Have you seen, have you seen that? No? Okay. The applicant is preparing to increase the impervious coverage on lot over the maximum amount allowed for the zone. It is estimated that the impervious coverage will be four hundred square feet over the permitted by ordinance. This will result in an increase in stormwater runoff from the property. The applicant is required to provide stormwater measures to mitigate the additional runoff from the four hundred square foot feet of the cer- the surface area, either with seepage pits or other stormwater management devices. All underground roof leader pipes that will be discharging to se- seepage pits shall be constructed using perforated pipe and placed in a stone bed in accordance with township ordinance unless otherwise directed by the township engineer. Proposed grading information has not been provided, however, the area proposed for the patio is relatively flat, therefore, it appears that the lot will accommodate the new patio with little or no grade change. If the applicant incites to change the grade of the property or, or move five cubic yards or more of soil, then a soil moving permit is required. Do you, do you, um...
Yeah, that's all, there's actually existing drainage on the property.
Mm-hmm.
That connects into the municipal storm drainage system that we're gonna be re-retrofitting and also adding to.
Okay.
There's a driveway permit applied for, and there's also a minor soil movement permit applied for.
Okay.
We're waiting on zoning approval.
Okay.
Uh, the client does have pictures he wants to show you guys of what's happening when it rains.
Sure, we gotta keep, we gotta keep the pictures, that's the only thing.
But, Mr. Wall?
They have A1's group.
Is that also including the seepage? Is the changes including the seepage pit?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the nature of this patio, is it blocks?
Uh, paving stone patio.
It's a what?
Uh, paving stone.
Now, will there be spaces between it for drainage, or is it gonna be sealed?
It's gonna be sealed.
It's gonna be sealed, okay.
Completely sealed, no, no water can enter.
We use polymeric sand for the joints, so there is, um, a minimal amount of water that does percolate through the stone itself, but I don't know what that percentage is.
But your, your leader...
Yeah, not much.
The leader, the drains you have now, will it catch the water off the patio?
Yes.
Okay.
Where is the municipal drain that you're tying in?
Uh, in the front of the house, in the road line, nine Ronald Avenue.
How far is it away? I don't see it on the, uh, little survey. Yeah, half here.
Look at these. We don't have a picture of that.
I don't have, sure, I can pull them on Google, probably they might have it.
The only reason I want to follow on that for a minute, is that the concern is... The impervious coverage request is a pretty significant increase. Ten percent over eleven, okay? So my only question would be, you're, you're wanting the patio to be the same width as the current house, which would look nice, I guess, right?
Yeah.
But does it have to be that wide?
Can you cut down? What would be the proposed idea?
I'm not gonna propose anything, but we're gonna ask you to...
How, how much can you make it?
Mr. Willand, there was one point we should, uh, note here. This is a four thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
If you had a sixty thousand square foot lot, which is, six thousand square foot lot, you might not be here with a percentage, you'd be much less.
Additionally, if I may also find out my lot is narrow compared to other places as well with my property, so I would like to find out as well.
The back, the backyard today is mud. There's nothing there. So, it, it's just mud, there's no patio. I mean, you have pictures, right?
Yeah. So what about the neighbors? What is their, is there anybody here? What is their, did you speak to them? Have they been getting water from your property, do you know?
I mean, I'm getting water from my neighbor property in my property, but I haven't told them anything, I just wanted them to get it out. Uh, and I, I didn't know about the memo from, um, Sir Lewis.
Okay.
I mean, with the, with the drainage, shall be proposed in the contract?
Yeah.
It, it's gonna be significantly, significantly better than what's happening now.
Okay.
For everybody, for him, for the neighbors.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be any need for a curb or road, uh, exhibition?
There's an existing Schedule forty pipe that goes into the storm drain that we're just gonna basically tap onto.
As the front of the property?
On the front of the property.
It's not shown on the survey, so is it just off your property, or...
It's, it's right, right at the curb line.
Yeah, so it's on the curb line, yeah. And in front of your property, you don't have to go across another property to get there, okay, that was the question. If you need a road opening permit, same as the last the other applicant, you have to coordinate that with the...
Yeah, they were actually, uh, already applied for, but got denied because we're waiting on zoning.
Yeah.
Sorry, and it's, it's core drilled into the back of the inlet.
Okay.
Thanks. No further questions.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, seen none. You, you've said what you want to say, you don't have anything else to add, do you? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? Hear none, seen none. Um, someone like to make a statement, it is one hundred square feet, but it's a substandard lot?
I think between that and the fact that the testimony given states that they're gonna correct some of the ills that are going on, and we have nobody coming here to say that it's a problem, but as far as your neighbors, so I'll be voting for it as lo- as you're going to agree with Mr. Liza's improvements.
Someone frame a resolution?
Application twenty-two, colon, twenty-three. Krishna Rena, nine Ronald Road, block five-nine-zero, lot number eleven, zone R dash four. The issue are granted C variance to install a patio contrary to section four-thirty-dash-thirty-five, column eight and thirteen, with, uh, in conjunction with the engineering report.
Second Jaskowitz. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Iverkin.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and you'll be free to proceed. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Application twenty-two, colon, twenty-nine, Joseph and Deborah Dembeck. Sixteen Farren Drive, C variance to construct a one-story addition with wet bar, two concrete eighteen-square-foot stoops and one twenty-four-square-foot concrete stoop.
Sir, raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about to before the board through yourself, you got? And for the record, you're Joseph, uh, Dem- Dembeck?
That's correct.
And you're the owner of the subject property?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Chairman, the, uh, what is the sworn? You're sworn.
Okay, so... You're here because... Well, you're asking for a building coverage of point seventy-four.
That's what I'm asking for.
You're in an R-three zone, there are fifteen square thousands, is your house sixteen thousand square feet. So what's one percent, that's a hundred and sixty, three-quarters, that's a hun- so you need a hundred and twenty square foot of building coverage, and you need point sixty-three, uh, of impervious coverage, which is probably, but basically the same amount. Matt, just tell us what you'd like to do, why you want to do it.
Absolutely, so we have, apparently on the property, there is a cement patio that's gonna, this will replace the cement patio. That will obviously come up. And, uh, and it's in addition to the family room with sliding doors on three sides, which the stoops come proposed, they have steps to go out.
Mm-hmm.
That's where the stoops come in. Um, and it's just enlarging the house. The, the bad news, I'm getting older, the good news, I'm getting more daughter-in-laws and more grandkids, so... So we'd like to stay in Parsippany and, uh, not move.
Any other questions? Nope.
You know, your pool doesn't show any patio around it, you expect, extend, intend to expand that?
No, sir, no, nothing's happening with the pool.
Okay, because...
There's a sidewalk around it, but there's no...
Right, I'm just, you're talking about a family outings here, okay.
Chair, any questions?
I was just trying to avoid you, you have to come back here.
The standard, uh, drainage not being impacted on the adjoining neighbors.
Yeah, we have, well, let's just read the engineer's report, I had that.
Right, there isn't...
That's not it. Uh, that's it. Okay, so, um, this is from the, um, township engineer. The applicant is proposing a slight increase in impervious coverage over the maximum amount allowed on the zone. The proposed addition is in the area where an existing concrete patio is located, does not appear. There will be a, a large increase of stormwater runoff from the property, no grading information is provided, but a soil moving permit would be cro- would be required if the applicant intends to move more than a hundred cubic yards of material, blah, blah, blah. Uh, is supposed to provide, blah, blah, blah. Okay, yeah, I mean, you would, you would, um, you're not, you're not gonna create any additional drainage that's gonna affect any of your neighbors, and if if it was such that you would remediate that, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on a testimony given? I hear none, seen none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, sir.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. The minimus app, the ministry, the minimus request, gentlemen?
Absolutely.
Okay, somebody frame a resolution.
I can do it. Application twenty-two, colon, twenty-nine. Joseph and Deborah Dembeck. Sixteen Farren Drive, block seven-zero-eight, lot number nineteen, zone R dash three, to issue or grant a C variance to construct a one-story addition with wet bar, two concrete eight, eighteen-square-foot stoops and, uh, one twenty-four-square-foot concrete stoop. Contrary to engineering department memo. Recommendations.
Second Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Iverkin.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, we'll memorialize this at our next meeting, and enjoy.
Okay.
Take care now.
Have a good summer.
Application twenty-two, twenty-eight, Joseph Puzo. Three Lake Place. Two. All right.
Sir, raise your right hand. You swear or affirm testimony about to before the board through yourself, you got?
Yeah.
And for the record, you're Joseph Puzo, you live at Two Lake, uh, Place, and you are the owner of that property.
Correct.
Thank you, you're sworn, you can have a seat.
Okay, side yard setback, five point seven where six is allowed. Yards and courts open deck, twenty-two point five, nine percent where nineteen is allowed. Impervious coverage thirty-four point four-nine where thirty is allowed. You want to construct four hundred ninety-six square foot open deck with stairs. What's gonna be below the deck?
Right now, there is actually a patio. Part of it's on top of the patio.
You're gonna get rid of the patio, or the patio's gonna...
I thought it's gonna be there.
You're gonna leave it there, okay. What is it, concrete?
Uh, half is stem concrete, the other half is, uh, paper.
Okay, let's...
This is the wooden deck above it.
Excuse me?
This will be a wooden deck above it.
Correct, you will compice it.
So part of, part of the existing water can go through the other, the paper part, the other part, no.
Yeah, we have a problem, no change there.
But it doesn't really change anything with the deck.
Okay, R-three zone is fifteen thousand square foot, John?
Yeah.
So you gotta, you gotta weigh substandard lot there, you're only eight thousand four hundred and thirty-nine square feet, if you had a a conforming lot, you wouldn't be here. It's just because of the, of constraints, which you have no control over, right?
Correct, yeah.
You can't buy any land, there's no land for sale, I'm sure.
No, not, I'm looking at it.
And they're not really terribly, uh...
What, what is next to you, if I'm standing in the middle of the road looking at your house?
So to my left is a house. To my right is actually, uh, Edgewater, Edgewater, uh, Road.
Okay.
It goes, and actually goes straight to the lake, because I live on a lake.
Are you, you're a connoisseur?
Correct, but, uh, like across street from me is, um...
Does Edgewater place a road?
Yeah, Edgewater, yeah.
There's a road there?
Correct, yeah. It kind of like ends, because I live on the lake, so...
Right, okay. And, but if the houses, the house on the left is a gar- is, your survey showing a garage? And the house is further away than the garage?
Well, uh, it's attached to that garage.
Okay, is there any bushes or trees between you and your neighbor?
Uh, no, not really, just friends.
Okay.
Family friends.
Have you seen the, um, municipal engineer's report?
Yes, I have, I talked to, uh, Brandon.
And you, and it stated, uh, June twenty-third, twenty-seven?
Correct, yeah, because it was two.
So you can, you can, um, conform to all the requirements?
Yeah, he said he was gonna review it, and, because he was on vacation two weeks. So he says he's gonna review it and, uh, get back to me, but, yeah. It's not gonna be...
Chair, anything?
No, the, the interest letter is fine.
Questions? It's a, it's a very strange-looking lot, so I'm sure that doesn't, doesn't help to, with the setback, so...
You know, it's a piece of pie.
Yeah. Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none, seen none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. What do you think, Mr. Jaskowitz?
I think it's, uh, the minimus in nature, and the applicant is going to conform with the requests of, uh, Mr. Liza, so I'll be, uh, voting for it.
Sir, ready to go to one resolution?
I will. Application twenty-two, colon, twenty-eight. Joseph Puzo. Two Lake Place, block number forty-four, lot twenty, zone R dash three, to issue or grant a C variance to construct an open deck with stairs contrary to section four-thirty-dash-thirty-five, column eight and thirteen, and section four-thirty-dash-ten, I.
Second Jaskowitz. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Jaskowitz.
Yep.
Mozzarella.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willand.
Yes.
Iverkin.
Yes. Results of variance is granted, good luck, we'll memorialize this in two weeks. Application, uh, something. Twenty-one, sixty-three. Mr. O'Neil? Mr. O'Neil, uh, kind of recap where we were on you, what, what have we heard and, uh, who have we heard from, and...
We've heard from, uh, building operations, we've heard from the site plan engineer. We are now getting ready to start the traffic testimony, we have traffic and planning left.
Mr. O'Neil, um, I was reading something on social media today, and there's a lot of misconceptions about A, where, where this is, B, what, what's going to happen, C, it's the second one in Parsippany, this is not the second one in Parsippany, is it?
No, there's one down on Route ten.
But that's not Parsippany, that's Mars Plains, okay.
This is the first in Parsippany.
And can you just clarify one thing for me? Is the big issue here at the thousand feet of a, um...
Other fast food.
Another fast food? Is that, is that a significant piece of this application that we have?
The variance that we're considering tonight, the main variance, there's a bulk variance also, but the main variance has to do with its proximity to the fast food restaurant across the street. The way the ordinance is written, it prevents fast food restaurants from being located within a certain proximity of each other. Doesn't anticipate this being on defiied at highways.
Okay.
So even though it's the only facility of its type on that side of the street, it's getting a proximity variance.
Sounds like something the council should look at, don't you agree?
We would definitely think the council would be interested.
And let me just clarify one more point, um, if I wanted to put Bob's Diner where you have the Chick-fil-A proposed, wouldn't need a thousand, thousand-foot variant, or variance from the thousand-foot?
We probably wouldn't be...
Wouldn't be before this board, we would be before the, the planning board as a simple restaurant. And, um, okay, so, I just, I want to clarify some things from my own mind, from the board, from members of the public of what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, the main issue is the proximity to the restaurants across the street.
Okay.
There's a bulk variance generated.
Yeah, and, and your, uh, proposal, from what I've seen so far, if I remember correctly, the current impervious coverage was over ninety percent?
Yeah, we're, we're cleaning that site up considerably, we're putting in a buffer in the rear. Uh, we've had testimonials to that.
And you're, you're gonna be down to like sixty percent impervious coverage, if I remember correctly?
I don't want to misspeak.
Well, it, well, it's a significant drop from ninety-some percent. Okay, and maybe you can have, have some, one of your witnesses reiterate that thing, and, and...
There's eighteen storefronts currently in the existing center, that's all being torn down to be replaced by the one restaurant. The remainder of the site will be taken up by a parking lot, uh, landscaping, and the drive-through lanes itself.
And we're gonna, we're also, we would also see a significant improvement in the flow of traffic around this, uh, piece of property, because right now, there's really very little curbing, isn't there? I mean, it's kind of a free-for-all when you, when you're driving from the side roads and et cetera, correct?
That's a, that, not to take the thunder from my traffic expert, but that's a very apt description, it is a complete free-for-all. Hanging on and off the highway there.
Okay. Thank you for Thank you for helping me out with those, those points, and now we can call your next witness.
So we'd like to get right into traffic.
Surveying your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the boards to yourself, you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Uh, Patrick Downey, DOTW, anyway.
And you're, uh, an engineer?
Yes.
Traffic engineer, and your testimony will be traffic?
Correct.
And have you been, um, all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Correct. Uh, licensed professional engineer, certified professional traffic operation engineer, um, bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from World University. License accepted.
And, uh, you've been sworn either before this board or other boards?
Not this board, but other boards.
Mr. Chairman, he's sworn and qualified. In traffic.
You may proceed. Mr. Downey, you've, uh, provided a traffic report to this board, isn't that true?
Yes, it is. Uh, both this board and to the department.
So you've heard some of the testimony at the last hearing. I wonder if you could just go through some of the issues of concern here.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm essentially just gonna walk through the results of our traffic study. Uh, you can see the site plan over there, which I'll be referring to. I guess to start with site access, uh, as Chairman was mentioning, there's a lot of driveways out there currently. Condit Street's essentially a continuous curb cut along the entire thing. Along forty-six, there's five, uh, independent driveways. You can see we're cleaning that up to one on each. Uh, one on forty-six has been located as far west as possible for two reasons. That maximizes spacing from the adjacent intersection of Condit. It also maximizes the room we were able to dedicate to the drive-through stacking. Uh, the drive-through on Condit Street, again, been located relatively far from Route forty-six, just for separation. Uh, which is good engineering practice. Um, the forty-six driveway I'll mention is a long state highway. That driveway requires a highway access permit from New Jersey Department of Transportation. Uh, we've applied for that permit. Uh, received one round of comments. Nothing major, mostly technical comments. Uh, so we're confident that that permit's ultimately gonna be obtained. Uh, the first step of our traffic study is to essentially define the limits of it. NJDOT has specific methodology for how you determine that based upon the site-generated trips associated with the proposed use and the existing use. Uh, understanding that while the existing, uh, mixed-use development may not be totally occupied at the moment, the site is approved for over fifty thousand square feet of the combination of retail and office use that's being replaced by a fifty-four hundred square foot, uh, single restaurant.
You would make the promise a little bit more?
Sure. Is that better? Great. Uh, so yes, so we compare the site-generated trips, existing and proposed. It's important to note that Chick-fil-A's traffic, uh, is not primarily destination in nature. Um, a lot of people who go to Chick-fil-A are what we call pass-by trips in traffic engineering. Those are trips that are already on the road, uh, going other places such as home, work. They decide to drop in, pick up food, and continue on their way. What that means is for every two customers Chick-fil-A gets, really one of them is already on the road, only one is quite broken due to the road running.
Did you say that it's currently, there could be fifty thousand square foot of what, of buildings on the property? It, there is, or there could be?
Is.
There is fifty thousand?
Right, not fully operating, but at its peak.
And this is only ten percent of the...
Slightly over, but yes, roughly ten percent.
Give or take a couple of, ten and a half percent of...
Yep.
What's there now?
Yes. Uh, so the result, uh, is to the Jason Roadway Network, there's eighty or fewer additional trips during peak hours that we studied, uh, which is the weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday. Uh, DOT and ITE both identify a hundred peak hour trips as a common threshold of what's considered significant, what would warrant a traffic analysis. Uh, so what that means is in our traffic studies, we don't be required by DOT to study the site driveways. Uh, however, we did also analyze the intersection of forty-six and Condit simply because we're at the corner and it was obvious to do so. Uh, we conducted traffic counts. They were done in twenty-twenty-one. So we also compared those volumes to pre-pandemic traffic volumes just to account for anything antipodal that might have been going on due to COVID and closures. Uh, we factored our counts accordingly wherever discrepancies were noted. Uh, we then analyzed the operation of those intersections, pre and post-development. So utilizing industry standard methodology, um, which provides a level of service result, which I'm sure you've heard before, ranging from A being the best to F being the worst. Uh, Route forty-six and Condit Street projected to be level service C, uh, with minimal changes in delay from the pre-development condition. Uh, the forty-six driveway is level service D or better, and the Condit Street driveway is level of service A. All of those results satisfy NJDOT's level of service criteria. Uh, additionally, based on one of the comments we received, um, anticipated queue lengths we're taking a look at at each of those locations, uh, it's projected, uh, during peak conditions, uh, there'd be approximately two vehicles waiting to get out of Condit Street or the driveway on forty-six. Uh, less than one vehicle trying to exit the Condit Street driveway. So we're not anticipating any operational issues due to huge spillback between intersections or between aisles. Uh, so overall, based on this study, our professional opinion would be that there's not anticipated to be a significant traffic impact from this project. Uh, and again, I mentioned that traffic study was also submitted to NJDOT in addition to the town. They had no comments on it. They were in agreement. Moving internal to the site, uh, from external, uh, we also reviewed the site plan in terms of circulation, parking safety. Uh, for parking, I think our site engineer mentioned before, but fifty-four spaces are required for the ordinance. Seventy-five are proposed, which more than complies. Uh, the required electric vehicle and ADA parking spaces are provided. And there's also provision for an additional nineteen land bank spaces on that western aisle that they currently have parking, uh, if additional parking is ever needed in the future. The stall sizes, aisle widths, uh, stall sizes of nine by eighteen, aisle widths of twenty-four feet, those are typical and comply with the ordinance. Uh, as far as the drive-through, um, the drive-through stacking on this site is substantial. Uh, you'll see that there's a two, full, two lanes all the way around from the entering to the ordering canopy to the meal fulfillment canopy. That's Chick-fil-A's preferred standard for all their new stores. Uh, it allows them to service orders in both lanes simultaneously rather than one at a time. Uh, results in shorter service times and people getting out of there, uh, not queuing up. The total stacking length here is over thirteen hundred feet. It's enough for about sixty-three vehicles. To put that in perspective, we have research data from about ten other Chick-fil-A's throughout New Jersey. The average peak we see of those is about thirty. The maximum we saw in under is forty. One of the studied sites was that nearby site in Morris Plains, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with. That site had about thirty. Uh, so this, this site plan provides stacking to accommodate double, uh, what we've seen in Morris Plains experience and what we've seen on average statewide.
When you give those numbers, do you have numbers for what it was like the first month compared to what it is now?
First month of COVID?
No, first month of being open.
Oh, yeah, so grand opening, I think our operational testimony touched on that as well. Grand opening is definitely challenging because it pent up demands, uh, especially in areas where there aren't already existing Chick-fil-A's proximate. It's an exciting new thing coming to the area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the one good thing about this particular site is it is relatively close to Morris Plains. I think roughly five and a half, uh, miles away. So what we typically see at those, they actually split, they relieve each other, in essence. They're self-cannibalizing the market area a little bit. So grand opening will definitely be, um, you know, well thought out and, uh, a bit of a challenge that'll be overcome. Uh, a lot of times Chick-fil-A even hires off the police to help with traffic management.
So if that was part of the, if we decided to approve this on that condition, there wouldn't be objection to that?
No.
Uh, that, if police were needed in the first month?
That's fine. We'll accept that.
Okay.
Who pays for that?
Chick-fil-A. Schedule's, uh, set by the police.
When?
So I don't understand your, your reference to self-cannibalizing it. You're telling me that if, if a Route forty-six Parsippany site were approved, that it would draw from the Morris Plains, um, customer base?
Correct, so if you live, say...
I, no, exactly, but these are two separate areas. All right, I mean, if somebody's, if, 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 if somebody wants Chick-fil-A in Morris Plains, or let's, let me put it this way. If somebody wants Chick-fil-A, whatever, they're traveling on eastbound ten for some reason, they're going to just go to Parsippany?
No.
I'm not understanding that.
No, I think what he means is if there was somebody, say, two miles from, from here, who used to go to Morris Plains and now there's a closer, am I, am I right?
I'll give you that.
Okay, you're, you're, you're gonna take the path of...
Yeah, no, I, I got that part. Okay, got it.
Right, and it's also not new for that population. There's already a Chick-fil-A available. It's not like, oh, Chick-fil-A's coming here. We all gotta rush there and get Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, but you really don't have data that narrows or defines if somebody, like the chairman just said, is up here and is like jonesing for Chick-fil-A, that they're going to make that ride to Morris Plains as opposed to any other fast-food restaurant? You don't have data.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, yeah, I'm asking you the question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I, I have extensive experience with Domino's pizzas, and they do that kind of, that's exactly what they do.
They do, so...
When they want to open another store, they look and they say, well, where are we gonna draw from and who, who's gonna be affected? It's, I'm sure a company like Chick-fil-A knows...
But you don't have a data, do you really have that specific of a data point?
If I can clarify, what I mean is I can't say if someone's gonna go to Chick-fil-A instead of McDonald's. That's what I was saying, I don't have data for. What I mean is say there's someone who currently in Parsipony goes to Chick-fil-A once a week, they no longer need to drive to Morris Plains.
Right, yeah, okay, got it, yeah.
So what? Based on your data, your analysis of other Chick-fil-A restaurants throughout the area, right?
Correct, and also information that we understand from working with Chick-fil-A. They develop a lot of sites, not just in New Jersey, and that's typically what they see. The ones near other sites typically don't have, uh, quite as many issues as opening.
So you said the average is thirty cars at a time in, uh...
Correct, and that's not like an average over the course of the day. That's the peak we saw each, average those altogether.
And then that's, and then the forty was the most you saw during a peak?
Correct.
So is that including one of Morris Plains? Because I think, just my opinion, I could drive by there at any point during the day and I see thirty cars in there.
Yeah, that's essentially exactly what we...
So it's peaks all day, basically?
Yeah, like, we'll go have people on site counting it all day.
Okay.
Days and nights.
Okay, so then also you're saying they won't put, you'll, you'll divide Parsipony, but is there any kind of studies done on how many you're gonna pull from Fairfield, Denville, Rockaway to come down here? That wouldn't drive to Morris Plains? Now that we have one, it would be continuous?
The DNT methodology has to prepare what's called a graphing model. Essentially establishes a radius that you can pull from, um, looks at where the population centers are within that area, what the travel time is to your site. Uh, that all factors into it to determine where to trip to.
Right, and I got, I got one more. So I don't, not familiar with Chick-fil-A too much. My wife and kids go, I haven't. Um, is there a loyalty program that where you would see who you're currently pulling in Morris Plains, say from Denville, Rockaway, uh, Fairfield, Montville?
I don't know if there's a loyalty program. Sounds like something that might be just, but I certainly don't.
That's not, that's not based, your model isn't based on...
Correct, it's based on the DOT methodology for how to do traffic.
All right, I just wanted to know if we're clear on who we're gonna be pulling from, if this goes to...
You're, um, and, and again, I'm gonna refer to social media. There appears to be a significant amount of people who live on the two streets that go north from, the two streets that parallel forty-six. And one of them is Ball and the other, I think, Hawkins. You've been here so long, you know all the streets. Anyway, um, and, and it's something that I've looked at, Ken, and I don't know if this has been factored into your, to your, um, traffic. The exit on Condit, can that be made a right turn only to avoid having people then tra, traverse through Ball and Hawkins? And, and if they were to exit that way and they wanted to go, they lived on Ball or Hawkins, all they have to do is go down a short distance, make a right, and then they can go rapid back into the development. But it will prevent people that don't live on Ball and Hawkins or the side streets from, from using that as a, as a way to get to Fort, to over to Beverwick Road and possibly go north on Beverwick Road. They can still do that by going down to Baldwin and go back Baldwin. I, I see a great need for a right turn only out of that, out of that, um...
Yeah, you actually stole a lot of the points I was gonna say to respond to your question.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, so essentially, uh, you pointed out exactly, if you want to go north, unless you live in the streets basically between forty-six and Vale, it's faster to go around to Baldwin and go up Vale. If you look at the map, uh, the travel distances. So we're really talking about a small population of Chick-fil-A customers there. Uh, but again, like you mentioned, even if you lost the left turn out on the Condit Street driveway, if you were determined to cut through there, you could still do it with some of the street. Um, those, the streets provide relatively good connectivity between Beverwick Road to the north and forty-six to the west. So there's really nothing you can do to fully prevent people using those streets if they want to. They are public streets, um, that can be used. It's also not unique to this particular land use I'll just mention. There's an existing mixed-use development there that people can cut through from. Uh, anything else in this commercial zone that could go there would have similar, uh, challenges. Uh, but the key is based on the trip distribution and the fact that the majority of Chick-fil-A's traffic is drawn from traffic already on forty-six, just traveling home or work. Uh, the actual volume projected to go back there is not substantial.
So what's the downside of putting a sign that says right turn only?
Um, in, in my opinion, the main thing that does is just inconvenience the people who do live there.
Yeah, but they seem to be the ones that we're concerned about.
And they're impacted.
I'm being told that that's okay.
And they're the ones shaking their head that they think they like that.
I think, I think that's an important...
Yeah, I mean, and, and we also...
Important, uh, neighbor-friendly thing to do.
And we also have a lesson learned on some of the signage that we have and on existing things like Bank of America. We have the signage, but people don't necessarily respect it.
Mm-hmm.
So that's also worth noting to the board.
So you'd accept that question?
I got a, I got a quick question in regards to...
If I could just put a finer point on that, uh, Ms. Snyder, before you ask your question. Uh, we will agree to a condition that there'll be no left turn out on the Condit, coming out of the site on the, uh, Condit Street exit. I will point out that these are general access streets, and if there's really a concern about through traffic on these streets, the place to go is council and make it, designate the street as no through traffic. That'll solve your problem, but the board has a limited amount of power to do anything, but, uh...
You know that it could happen, Mr. O'Neill.
I don't know what council will or will not do.
I don't think so. I, uh, for the last four years, I have come north Beverwick Road to Hawkins and make a right, go all the way down to Summit, make a left, and pull into the parking lot where I work. Because I don't want to go out to forty-six and have to make a right turn on forty-six. People do it. Uh, I don't see, when I'm, when I drive, I don't see a lot of traffic, but it was our through...
Take my comment back, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to interfere with your commute, but we will agree with...
No, my office moves today, so...
We will agree to the decision.
Um, I'm sorry if I, if we interrupted your, interrupted your flow here.
It wouldn't be me if I didn't lodge an objection to evidence being presented that was cleaned on the internet. If, if people reading things and taking photos of things from the internet cannot be cross-examined, so I object to it being put in the open. I mean, the evidence, but your comments are so general, they don't really rise to that.
Mr. O'Neill, I, I am not presenting, um, facts or untruths that I've read on the internet. I've read what people were concerned about, okay? People were concerned about, and I'm trying to help everyone here, help the neighbors, help the applicant, help you, and, uh, and get this thing in the, in the, you know, going in the, moving in the law, okay?
So I had a question in regards to your Morris Plains property. Are you familiar with how the traffic dynamic plays out in the Morris Plains site?
Yes.
Okay. How does one lane in, one lane out, coming off of forty-six, absorb the initial volume of lanes before it starts bottlenecking into the two, the two lanes that finally become, that, you know, that finally go around that building?
Yeah, can I put up an exhibit? Uh, shall we have something that shows Morris Plains? I'll hope for this discussion.
Is this a...
We're gonna mark it.
And what A numbers is?
I think we only marked one of two.
A two?
A two.
A two?
Yes, A two.
This is, uh, stacking capacity, 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 uh, prepared by polliers to...
Can you please move that sense a little bit?
Move the stand a little bit, so we can see.
Yep, fine. Yes.
What is, what is this for? This is Morris Plains. It's a totally different layout.
Correct, so it's essentially a comparison, uh, between, uh, this proposed site on the top, the Morris Plains site on the bottom. Mainly highlighting how substantially greater the, the drive-through stacking capacity is in this proposed site plan. Uh, up top, you see our about thirteen hundred feet of stacking, uh, shown with the flow arrows. And the bottom is if you were to superimpose that onto Morris Plains, uh, basically just how far it will go, uh, based on how much bigger this site is.
But this is not how it plays out. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, go ahead.
This is not how it plays out. Anybody who's witnessed how Morris, Morris Plains plays out, it, you're, you're looking at, anybody who comes down eastbound ten, because, you know, again, I, as I go back to an initial statement that I made in, made in a previous hearing, you got a hot product. You know, everybody loves your product, all right, but let's not fool ourselves as to that happening in Morris Plains.
Well, this is based upon your study of Morris Plains, isn't it?
This is not representative of what Morris Plains always does. It's simply, simply superimposing what we can do on the...
Well, I know that, but we gotta deal with reality here.
We are dealing with reality.
We... Okay, so...
He has measured Chick-fil-A's. He has given you the volumes based upon their studies of Morris Plains and other Chick-fil-A's, and we are showing you the reality of it. And this is what the stacking looks like, it's superimposed in Morris Plains that we're providing in Parsipony.
This contradicts what goes on each and every day in Morris Plains. Anybody who travels down eastbound Route three, I mean, excuse me, eastbound ten...
Completely.
But, Mr. O'Neill, aren't they two different, I think one of your witnesses testified that they're two different, um, restaurants? There's one that's an older model, there's newer model.
This is the new, this is the new prototype model, the new standard model for what they're doing. The Parsipony model is designed to move people through faster, more efficiently, both in the drive-through and on online orders. So it's not a direct comparison as to the operations in Morris Plains in this, this restaurant.
So this is just showing what's the parking lot?
This shows you the stacking that is provided in Parsipony if it was this, how it lays out in Morris Plains. And it goes all the way through the parking lot, which as anyone who's been to Morris Plains knows, is how the stacking goes in Morris Plains. It goes beyond that level where you see the two lanes and that little turn down there, isn't that true? Mr. Downey, that's, that's the end of the formal stacking. And the rest of it now is proceeding through the parking lot.
Right, but in re, again...
In reality...
As long as people have eyes, like, such as I, I've seen pretty regularly these two lanes that are depicted around stalls. Out there, it's more like three, four lanes that actually go over these, the zebra stripes and the, and the gores and the, and the stripes that delineate the parking stalls.
If I may, I think Morris Plains had some issues based on its layout, um, which is substantially, I would say, inferior to the one proposed here. Number one, substantially smaller and shorter. Number two, it also has a bottleneck where it necks down to a single lane rather than two. So I think, in sort of a triage mode, they tried numerous things to try to manage the traffic at different times. I've seen times where there's one lane beyond, uh, the formal. I've seen times where there's two. I haven't seen four, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if it has happened.
So with Route forty-six having robust traffic, all right, it would be fair to say that there's the huge potential that the dynamic could mimic Morris Plains. And it goes back to my initial question, how does one lane in, one lane out, um, protect thi, this township This site.
And the overflow would, would there's, no.
The question is more or less, once they overflow their stacking, which if you look at Morris Plains, again, in agreement with Nancy, I think goes way more than this, there's no, there's no outlet for it here at this site proposal, whereas Morris Plains has the rest of the parking lot for people to, you know, in- incur road rage and try to find a way in line.
The Morris Plains thing has three hundred and ninety-five feet left-hand overflow. This has seven hundred feet, correct?
Uh, thirteen hundred.
Thirteen, but in the overflow of seven hundred, okay? So the point being it's double the in, on the property stacking ability, okay? And, and this is the thing I think we're losing sight of, okay? Uh, with the study, the, the report they've given us, the peak hours, even if it's double these numbers, they have enough room on this site to accommodate that without backing up under Route forty-six.
Yeah.
That's their testimony.
I can expand on that just a little bit. Uh, so number one, the formal concrete striped curved drive-through stack here does not provide twice what we typically see at Chick-fil-A's in New Jersey. So the need for overflow in the first place is greatly reduced. Uh, second, even if, uh, the back-of-drive-through were to go crazy and take the shortest route to the forty-six driveway, still, I believe, two hundred and fifty feet to get there. Um, and under dire circumstances, and maybe potentially the grand opening plan might incorporate, there is additional aisle here that can be used if you were to snake the back-of-drive-through queue to the right, down the first aisle toward the building, and then back left, uh, to forty-six. It would be almost double from what the formal drive-through stacking here is. Uh, backing onto the highway is not something we're anticipating at this site.
It's also tough to make a comparison because sometimes it could be deceiving. The, the Morris Plains one, like you said, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's one, it snakes. I don't know, you know, it could look like a lot of cars, but it could only be twenty-five on each side, and that's fifty, and you're ready for sixty-three. So, uh, it's tough to make, I, I go by it a lot, and sometimes it looks intimidating, but I'm not sure how many cars there are.
Essentially, by every metric that we go by, uh, the proposed plan here is far superior in terms of the drive-through's ability to handle.
Any other que-, are you with more testimony, or are you?
No, I have no further questions.
You have no further questions, sir? Any, any other questions by the board? We seem to have asked a lot of questions.
You, you, you represent that you'll cover the engineering review comments.
Yes, and then we'll also work with you about that left-out restriction, not to come up with whether that's a porked-up island or a sign, whatever.
Are you in a position to talk about the EV, um, parking spaces and all?
Uh, sure.
Cause I was looking, well, I want to mention once or ask about the trash area. Was that in the revised plans? Was that rotated?
Moved. This has been modified. The trash area has been, uh, let me take the microphone with you.
You took the trash area out of the buffer area.
Yeah, we've removed the trash area from the buffer area. We've located it closer to the building. You can see us there. Get back to, uh.
The only, the only variance you have in the buffer area now is where the driveway bins, correct?
I thought we were out of the buffer area.
Go ahead.
No, you have the drive, you have the driveway that comes.
Oh, the, yes, the section of driveway.
Little bottleneck, yes. Yeah, Jazz, you're referring to the trash. Yes, and moved to the south side of the aisle, uh, to get out of the buffer, out of setback, uh, generally, entire location.
But the, the buffer area along the north side is now compliant except the one section where the driveway comes along the building.
That's my understanding, yes.
What is the pathway for garbage removal?
Sorry, garbage?
Garbage removal.
Uh, so you can see the way that enclosure's angled, anticipates essentially a right-off of forty-six, uh, into here, um, and then coming out of forty-six, I believe. Yeah, we actually have circulation exhibit two. Uh, this is part of the site plan set, I believe, so I'm not sure it needs to be marked.
Now, that doesn't need to be marked, but please mark that as A four.
Sure.
Describe that. That's a new color rendering for us?
Uh, yes, A four color rendering of the site plan, Chick-fil-A Parsippany Troy Hills, uh, dated today.
Was that A three or A four?
Sorry, A three.
A three.
Sorry.
The waste pickup schedule, you're gonna talk about that? We never pinned that down. Now you've moved them. Is he able to talk about waste pickup schedules a lot?
Garbage?
Yeah, so my understanding is typical, uh, it's about three to four times a week at the start until demand shows that more is needed. Uh, it's typically during off-peak hours, uh, such as the morning.
It's not every day?
Uh, I don't believe it's every day at first. It might get there if the store needed it, uh, but that's not planning.
And would it be off, off, off-business hours before they open up, or?
I don't know if it's always before they open, uh, but Chick-fil-A's breakfast demand is not all that high, uh, so it's typically during the morning, uh, it's lesser.
Right, so we pinned that down that would be in the morning, not at night?
Yeah.
We got a yes, we got a yes, Jeff.
A question regarding the, um, electric vehicle parking spaces. So can, um, we have a couple shown here with, um, what I call the EVSE spaces, the electric vehicle service equipment spaces. So you show the, you show where the equipment is going to be installed. Do you plan to mark out which ones, or can you locate, uh, mention the ones that are EVSE, um, the make-ready spaces?
Sure.
Yeah, it's just entirely. No, you got to know how to pick your words.
Sorry, forgot the mic.
Jazz, what are we asking about?
Oh, it's electric vehicle charging station.
Oh, oh, oh.
Some have the equipment installed and some are just make-ready.
So, so all these will be actually installed, not make-ready. Uh, Jazz, so these will all be installed up front. Um, so there's two, uh, that have been here, these hatched areas. So that's four spaces there, uh, and then one ADA one, right there.
The question regarding ADA one, so can that be accessed from a wheelchair? That's the governing factor that the area around the unit can be accessed completely by a person in a wheelchair.
Correct. It also has to meet the ADA requirements.
Right, so it has, it just has to be accessible. I just want to have more detail when, when that comes through.
Sure, like on the drawings you're saying?
Uh, yeah, I would like a detail, more of a detail.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
And there's also, we have to, um, something the board has to come to, um, agreement on. Uh, the pavement markings versus the signage for an EV space. So my recommendation is that you have fifteen percent minimum required EV spaces, but you add one more to that, and that would be the handicap space. And the handicap skid fifth space would not be restricted like the other fifteen required ones would be. You following?
Yes. So if you're, you're saying it could be used as an ADA space with a gasoline car?
Um, yes, if it, so if it's fifteen plus one is like how, the way I like to explain it.
Sure. I mean, I certainly don't take induction to that. I don't know what the town's policy is on that, but I would be agree with that.
Is that in your letter, Jazz?
Um, no. No, that was, they had submitted their revised, and now I was looking at the plans. So the, also, we have to discuss, later on, we discuss the green pavement marking versus the, um, EV signage for the EVSE spaces.
Yeah, we can work with you to have whatever signage.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
At this point, are there any members of the public that have questions of the traffic engineer on his testimony this evening? If there is, please come forward and identify yourself. Who's, you gotta come over here and identify yourself, use a microphone.
Sir, for the record, could you state and spell your name?
Hello, uh, my name is Bohan Okuyan. They know me as Bo. I'm at one thirty Hawkins Avenue. Uh, one question I had was, you know, have you, uh, did anybody discuss number of cars that will be going to the restaurant every day?
Sure, uh, that's in the traffic study that was submitted, the total number?
What is that number, you know?
Uh, so during the peak hours, we have two seventy to three hundred trips. Uh, trip is one-way movement, that's analogous to a hundred and fifty customers roughly. Um, over the course of a typical day, uh, twenty-five hundred, so that's, again, twelve hundred in, twelve hundred out, it's based over the.
So we're gonna have twelve hundred cars going there?
Over the course of a day.
Over a day, okay. Twelve hundred.
How many, how many hours is that?
Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen, roughly.
So it's less than a hundred cars an hour?
Uh, yes, everything we do is essentially to analyze the, the peak hours, cause that's when things are the worst, when those hours there's over a hundred. But there's certainly off-peak hours, particularly in the morning, particularly where it's less.
Any other questions?
Yeah, most of the traffic should be happening in the afternoon, probably people going home. And then is there any kind of study done on this? You know, like how many cars would be going on certain hours?
We provided a traffic study. It's on file with the board.
He's provided all that information in his traffic study.
Okay, what is it?
Well, he, you can. It's on file with the board. It's a thick study.
It's a, you would, you would have to look at the report. He just.
Did you have the number on, on hand?
Can you, what was your exact question, PM? Traffic associated with Chick-fil-A on the road, what is your number?
Yeah, I mean, you have to, the reason I'm asking this question is this, okay? Let's say you said, you know, like, you're going to have maybe two, maybe three, maybe four hundred cars going over there between the hours of four and five, or six, or whatever. You, and most of the traffic will be using the Condit to get back on the, uh, North Beverick or Summit and going to the.
They can't, they can't use Condit because they can't make a left turn here.
Okay, they're gonna take Summit then. The reason is they're gonna go back to North Beverick.
The majority of traffic.
I live there.
I know what. Trust me, trust me. They're not gonna wanna go up to Beverwick Road and try and make a left turn onto Beverwick Road in heavy traffic. They're gonna go to Baldwin to Vale. Believe me, I've done it five thousand times. You don't wanna make a left turn off a Condit or Baldwin. You know what the traffic is like. You can't make a left turn off, if, in any type of heavy, heavy traffic, you can't make a left turn easily.
No, no, I'm talking about people getting to the restaurant.
Yeah.
Go back to forty-six.
Yeah.
Go to Summit, make a right.
Yeah.
Make another right to Baldwin, and go to North Beverick, make a right turn to go to the Route eighty.
But they, but all they have to do is go one block and make the U-turn at Vale Road and go back forty-six.
They may not do it. I mean, come on, let's be real.
You know, it's like, Mr.
Chairman, please admit it. This is, if I may, before Ms. Snyder asks her question, we've got a lot of chatter about people throwing out numbers. We're talking about the traffic study we provided now. These are questions for my witness. To, I'd ask the board to direct the public to refrain from comments and concentrate on questions for my witness, so we can get through this.
That's what you have to do. You have to ask questions.
Okay, the question is this, where is the number? Why, how come it's not here?
It's here, it's on file with the board.
Where is it?
Not gonna read the report into the.
No, no, you just want the numbers, that's all. Don't read the, I want the numbers.
There's a lot of numbers. They do a significant.
No, there is one number that we're interested in.
What is that number?
The number is, you know, how many cars going through the restaurant, okay? Between what hours? Each hour or, you know, estimate of it?
That's what I just, I thought I'd just answer that. So we have about two seventy to two ninety during the peak hours. That's trips, so it's about a hundred and fifty cars, cause each of those in and out is each trip. Uh, during the total day, about twelve hundred cars.
Does that answer your question?
No.
Well, then why don't you get, take you some time and look at the traffic report so if you wanna get more information.
You see now the burden's on us.
The burden's not on you.
Yeah.
The man made, the man testified to the, to the trips. If you're not happy with that information, you wanna read his whole report, you can go to Signora and she'll let you read the report.
Because it's the average, you know? Average don't mean anything.
Please don't testify at this point, sir. You can ask questions. Any other questions? Any other questions?
No, I don't wanna ask any more questions.
Thank you. Who's the next, next member of the public?
Sir, for the record, could you state your name and address?
Excuse me, my name's John Cabino. I live at twenty-seven Hawkins Avenue. Just to state, I'm in very strong opposition of this bill.
I don't wanna hear your, your testimony, I wanna hear a question.
You keep arguing for them, so I'm saying I'm against them. And reason for, you're comparing.
Wait, 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 stop right now. Stop right now. All right, I'm gonna go through this again very succinctly. This is the opportunity to come up and use the microphone and ask this witness questions about the traffic testimony that he gave this evening. At some point in this, in this process, I will ask members of public if they want to make a statement. And if you're gonna make a statement, you're gonna make a statement under oath. We're gonna swear you in, just like we swear to other witnesses. I'm gonna ask you again, do you have a ques- question for this witness?
Yes, sir, I apologize.
Ask the question.
You're comparing us to Morris Plains, it's completely involved in, as Nancy Snyder brought up, that's in a buffer zone of a shopping center.
Wait, 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 where's your question? Please ask a question.
I'm getting to it. If you stop rushing me, I will get to that question.
Go ahead.
She brought about the runoff, which goes into the buffer zone of the shopping center. On this one, the buffer zone would back right up at Route forty-six. Have you studied how that would affect that?
I think, I think the witness testimony testified to that, we're using the average number of cars that they anticipate in peak hours.
The testimony is it will not back up on the forty-six.
Correct.
The site is adequately designed, it'll hold it on the site. That is the answer that he's provided multiple times.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
Just one. As an expert for the traffic for this case, were you involved in development of the locations on Route seventeen, uh, Route twenty-two?
Uh, no, personally, I was not.
Could those locations strongly back out up the highway all the?
You're testifying again. What's your question? Thank you. Next.
Rhonda Crone, Sixth Ambler Way. I would like to understand if the car is coming from the east forty-six, how they're going to get to west? They're gonna come to Beverwick Road and go all the way, or they're gonna go down to Shopright and turn all the way around? And how much traffic backup will that be at the Beverwick Road white, you know, in order to.
Excuse me, is that an appropriate question, Mr.?
Yes, we anticipated this question.
You anticipate, okay, go ahead, cause it seems very, seems more traffic-oriented general than.
Well, it is traffic.
It is, and he's.
But I mean, it's not, it's not indicative of Chick-fil-A. I make a U-turn there all the time.
Well, but with the additional traffic from Chick-fil-A, you're gonna have more traffic.
This is in the scope of his testimony.
Agreed. Uh, so again, all those numbers, who's coming from each which way, uh, it's all in the traffic study, but just to summarize, people coming from the west, uh, to enter the Chick-fil-A, it's kind of a two-pronged answer. Um, depending on how far west they are, uh, it's generally faster for some folks to actually make their way up, uh, through Beverick to make the left up to forty-six, come into the site. They come very close, they're actually on forty-six eastbound, uh, the move would be a U-turn at Beverick. Uh, but again, that percentage is rather small. Um, the, the most of the traffic is drawn from forty-six westbound.
You don't think traffic is gonna come from forty-six east to go to Chick-fil-A on their busy times?
There is some, yes. Less than westbound, of all time.
Is it, is it a significant number in your opinion?
Uh, it is not. Well, but with the additional traffic from Chick-fil-A, you're gonna have more traffic.
This is in the scope of his testimony.
Agreed. So again, all those numbers, who's coming from each which way, it's all in the traffic study, but just to summarize, people coming from the west to enter the Chick-fil-A, it's kind of a two-pronged answer. Depending on how far west they are, it's generally faster for some folks to actually make their way up through Beverlywick to make the left on forty-six, come into sight. They come very close. They're actually on forty-six eastbound. The move would be a U-turn at Beverlywick. But again, that percentage is rather small. The, the most of the traffic is drawn from forty-six westbound.
You don't think traffic is gonna come from forty-six east to go to Chick-fil-A on their busy times?
There is some, yes. Less than westbound, is all the time.
Is it, is it a significant number, in your opinion?
Uh, it is not. It would be well below what DOT would consider significant. DOT didn't even ask us to analyze that intersection.
That's a level D, left turn as it is.
Well, that's because of the shopping center.
That's because it's an only one-lane left turn. If they had made a two-lane left turn, that would've been much more efficient.
I mean, there's double lefts every other approach.
Because you could make a double left onto Beverlywick Road. Unfortunately, when they did that work, they only made it a single left. And a lot of people make the U-turn there. A lot of people.
The proportion of traffic that Chick-fil-A would be of what's going through that intersection would be minimal, probably less than a percent of the total volume through there. You don't get to have an intersection with five-lane approaches for no reason. There's existing traffic there.
Any other questions?
I do. In regards to that U-turn that you said would be minimal, you said? How did they come across, how did they conclude it would be minimal? Where, where would that, where would somebody who's looking for something to eat, traveling eastbound forty-six, heading towards Beverlywick, they see this big Chick-fil-A sign? How, how, how does this study conclude that it would be minimal amount of traffic, making that U-turn to pursue Chick-fil-A, as opposed to any other establishment on the eastbound side of that highway?
So I answered the first part of that question, not so much the second part. For the first part, so DOT has methodology for analyzing how many trips from existing developments, proposed developments go through intersections. We run it for both existing and proposed and take the difference. We need essentially a hundred peak hour trips additional to study it, analyze it, do counts and analysis. At that intersection, has, I believe, roughly thirty.
So, so, as you said earlier, when we split off and half the people go to the Marsh Plains site and the other half come over here to this site, every person from that side will be making that U-turn, or going down to Shopright, correct? I mean, that would be the only way they can get in, unless, I guess, if they go to Baldwin and come all the way around?
If you're on eastbound forty-six, yes, those would be your two options. U-turn down there, or U-turn at that.
At that U-turn?
Correct.
So, we, the, do we have any idea, is there a number out there, or maybe, forgive me if I didn't see it or hear it? Is there a, a number that you guys figure may pull from the Marsh Plains location to this one?
Thirty turns at that intersection.
Right. I guess two different things. You're saying how many people specifically being reradical to Marsh Plains?
Well, you said we're gonna, there's gonna be some draw from that, that location to this one, right?
It's not a long specific number for that. NOR will be taking credit for that in traffic.
Okay.
I'm just saying, what we're doing is conservative, because it does not take credit for this.
I, 'cause I, listen, from my own view, when I come out of Target and go there, it takes two, three times through that light to get that left turn or the U-turn. So I can imagine it's going a little bit, it probably should be looked at. I can't imagine it'd be minimal.
What day part are you talking about, thirty making the U-turn there?
That's the projection for him, Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, apples and apples. So there's thirty additional trips going through that intersection, not specifically even on the U-turn.
Okay.
Between an existing fifty thousand square foot retail office use, and proposed fifty-four hundred square foot Chick-fil-A.
So you didn't study any increase in regards to, potential increase, in regards to that U-turn?
That's based upon IT and DOT thresholds of what requires analysis, which is a hundred peak hour trips. And like I said, this is less than a third, and DOT concur with that.
But no offense to the current businesses that are in that facility, I think there's gonna be a lot more of a draw to the, to this, as opposed to what's there now.
I think what's there now is a lot vacant, so it's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison.
Vacant based on, they were filled a couple weeks ago and are now moving out, or, and, or being re-leased, because there's a sign releasing the empty buildings out there. So if we're working on this, releasing the buildings. Anyway, it's my question.
I mean, you, you, you know, you're right, because the purpose of that U-turn, you can't make a left on eastbound forty-six to Baldwin Road. So for those people who need to kinda access Baldwin Road, coming from eastbound forty-six, that U-turn is, is frequently used to access that, that part of westbound forty-six in addition to the access to Baldwin Road. So, I, again, I go back to-
I just want to clear something up. We're not arguing that that's a good U-turn there, that it's not a busy U-turn. We're only arguing that-
Well, he said that-
We did a study. We're only adding thirty cars at the peak to that U-turn. To study that, the DOT requires you add that a hundred or above. So he didn't conduct the study, because we only add thirty to the site.
I got that.
The turn is not premium.
I got that, what Chris and I are saying.
But what he said, it was rated D.
No, we just, we just find it unbelievable that it's, it's less than a hundred, right?
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
That's what we're, that's what we're saying. It's no slight against your witness here. We're just very surprised.
Driving it is my-
Based on living here, and again, having a pair of eyes, traveling these roadways at all given day parts, being a part of the community.
An additional thirty, added by the Chick-fil-A.
I got, I got what you're saying, but I-
So your, your eyes are not showing-
I would respectfully disagree with DOT's assessment that this is a, a, not a heavily traveled U-turn area.
Two, two things to consider is, all of the businesses that are from Baldwin to the shopping center on the eastbound side, if you're exiting any one of those properties and you wanna go westbound on forty-six, or if you wanna make a right, a left turn onto Beverlywick Road, use that lane, okay? Use that lane. And it is, I remember these days from Gordon Mett, when he used to use an A-through-E, or an A-through-F assessment of the, of the intersection. And that, in the peak hours, that's clearly, and, and insignificant, the, the, the amount of cars that can, that can make a turn on one light, sometimes it's less than half. So, that's a problem. That's a problem that was there. Second of all, if I'm, if I'm west of here, and I was gonna go to my office that was a couple doors away from where they're proposing, I would get on eighty. I'd take eighty down to South Beverlywick Road, get off, and come around that way to avoid having to make that U-turn. And, and, so, you want, you're talking about people coming from, let's say they're coming from Hills of Troy or an area like that. They're most likely gonna get on eighty if they wanna go at forty-six west. That's what I would do. I wouldn't, I wouldn't come forty-six east with all the traffic lights and then make that U-turn. Doesn't make sense.
Not everybody in this corridor or quadrant of Route forty-six is gonna be as Parsippany savvy as you are. And so, there's going to be a lot of people who are going-
Been here fifty-one years.
Well, no, I, I got it, but, but I'm telling you that we're going to have a lot of out-of-towners who are just going to basically bump into walls, trying to figure out the right here, the left here, the up here, the down here, the, where you can make the U-turn, where you can't make the U-turn, and, you know, and, and this is stuff to consider as, as we review this application. Not everybody's, like, knows the roads like we do.
Any other questions? Please identify yourself.
Manuel Godoy, two-hundred Ball Avenue. Thank you, Board, for helping us with this. Question, you know how far is the bus stop, and the school bus stop?
Uh, I don't. Which direction are you referring?
Through forty-six and Conduit?
Uh, I don't.
There's a school bus stop there?
There's a school bus stop on forty-six? They pick up the kids on forty-six?
No, Conduit. And in the morning? In the morning, and they drop it in there.
They don't pick it up in front of the shopping center? They pick it up one block back? Just half a block?
What?
Half a block.
Half a block back? Yeah, I would say like three hundred feet.
Well, there's not gonna be a backup of cars on conduit, that's for sure.
Yep. If I'm understanding you correctly, I think our entire development and the vast majority of our traffic is south of where you're referring to, closer to forty-six.
Any other questions?
You know what is the bus stop, the regular people's bus stop?
Sorry, say it again?
The bus stop, regular people, where they drop the people in the afternoon?
I don't know the exact location, no.
Okay, since it's just connected, just in the U-turn that they're talking about.
What are you, I'm sorry, what are you, what are you talking about? Are you talking about transit services?
Yes.
Transit services deboards customers at Beverlywick and Route forty-six. That would be Lakeland Bus Services.
Yes. It's just in that U-turn that you were talking about.
No bus makes a U-turn there.
No, no, no. They drop the people in there.
That is correct. They drop, right, on the westbound side.
Yes. That's where the U-turn ends.
During afternoon peak.
Yes. That's loaded with people in there.
Okay, but that's right at the Bank of America site?
Correct.
Okay, that's not his site.
No, but it's, I just asked him how far is for on, on his business, because it's gonna affect the amount of people making the U-turn, plus the people, because they're picking, they're even like around five, it's increased because the amount of people they, they-
That's already an issue, isn't it?
Yeah, we already established it's gonna be thirty cars, and it's not significant.
Okay, any other questions?
How many cars you think is gonna increase daily through Ball and Hawkins?
I don't have that off the top of my head. We had, what, like, thirty peak hour? Over the course of the sixteen hours, spitballing probably two hundred or so. I would have to confirm that.
Two hundred cars are gonna come in from conduit?
Two from, over the course of sixteen hours.
Well, they're not gonna go out. They're only gonna come in.
Uh, sure, sure.
So it's a hundred?
Unless you take the Summit, sure.
It's a hundred in a day.
Yeah, that, very off the cuff. I would wanna confirm that, but-
Any other questions?
That will remain.
Have you ever thought to increase the speed on Conduit to twenty-five to thirty-five?
They don't have it. They have jurisdiction.
What about Ball and Hawkins?
There's no authority to do that.
We're not proposing to change any public streets.
Thank you.
Next. What's increase the speed?
Hi, thank you very much for your time. Shalom Lubin, one-thirteen Hawkins. I had a couple of questions. I appreciate your patience. I know that on this thing, you changed the location of the garbage cans. Were there any other changes made to this from the last meeting? Or was that the only one?
That was the key change.
They adjusted the landscaping.
The landscaping. When the garbage pickup, would the garbage truck block the lane going out?
If the truck was actually there-
When the truck is there?
Yes, correct. It would be there for a little bit, yes.
So people wouldn't be able to get out?
Correct.
Okay.
Again, it's a pretty short operation. It's not the main axis either, but, yes.
Okay, another technical question, and I know you mentioned the two lanes right over here of cars going all the way around up until this point, right over here. When you have two lanes of cars coming right over here and stopping, and there's only one lane to the right and cars coming the other way going left, where's that inside car supposed to go?
So, I mean, those two cars coming out there have probably been next to each other for the past ten minutes, going half mile an hour through the system.
No, no, once they get here, where are they, where are they supposed to go?
Wherever it is they need to go.
So the left car is supposed to make a right while the right car is on the right?
Yes.
If they need to, and there's certainly courtesy gaps between the customers there.
And cars in the meantime are coming the other way, because it's a two-way. Cars are coming down here and both lanes are supposed to make a, merge into one right turn.
This is essentially why there's stop signs and traffic control at any intersection.
So the two lanes have to go back to one lane for the cars to get out?
If you both need to go right, one of you's gonna let the other one go first, and then you're gonna go.
Okay.
And that's not unique to this Chick-fil-A site plan either. That's fairly common.
A couple of the questions. The, the, when you say you're gonna make a, an exit only, I'm, I'm sorry, when you say you're gonna make a right turn only, no left turn, would that have the curbing you kinda have at the Bank of America that wouldn't allow people to make the left turn?
Likely, yes, yes.
Okay, did you do any traffic studies about Ball and Hawkins?
Uh, they are included in the traffic study, yes.
Okay, so is there any possibility that you would be open to the idea of making this an exit only? So cars can't come in from Beverlywick to Hawkins to get into the place, because that's where most of the traffic's coming?
I see where you're coming.
All the cars from the north that wanna get into this facility, they're gonna come down Beverlywick, they're gonna see the backup, they're gonna make a right turn onto Ball, or a right turn onto Hawkins, and then go right into Conduit. So it's not, there's no backup.
They're still gonna do that and go to forty-six. They're still gonna use Ball and Hawkins.
How will they get in? If this isn't, if this isn't exit only, they'll have to go to forty-six.
Yes, but if I was coming from my house, I would take North Beverlywick Road to the first right turn I can make, which is Hawkins, right?
The first one is Ball, the second one is Hawkins.
Second one, first one's Ball. I would make that right turn. I make that right turn every day for the last four years when I was going to work. I don't go out to forty-six to make the right turn, because it's, it's all backed up.
So that's the traffic increase that I'm asking about. Hundreds of cars.
It doesn't matter whether you have an entrance on Ball or not. I'm still gonna go down to, to Conduit, and then I'll go out to forty-six. Still gonna go past your house.
There'll be much less cars going in if there's no entry, if the only entrance is on forty-six. People won't do that as often. There's no question.
Well, you're not, you're not leaving.
Are you, so the question is, are you open to the idea of making this an exit only?
No.
Yeah, and, as the chairman was pointing out, if someone wanted to come through the neighborhood back there to get here, they would still be able to do so, right on the forty-six and turn right in.
But they wouldn't have to. You don't have to go down Hawkins, down, down Conduit to get-
You have to go, because, because Beverlywick Road is all backed.
I mean, someone could easily, just as easily come down Conduit just to go to something west of us. There's a whole commercial corridor here.
You're going to fire, you're going to fire stuff. You're doing the same thing.
Because of the orientation of the dumpster. We could not make that exit.
Because of the trash truck?
One of the reasons, but yes, a significant reason.
Is there a way to make an exception for a trash truck?
No.
Okay. Is there anything that you've thought of doing to minimize the traffic coming on Ball and Hawkins, particularly during peak hours when people are walking?
I, I think simply the site location lends itself to being primarily driven by forty-six.
You take the left out, so it can't go back through the neighborhood.
Correct, and as was just mentioned, we also agreed to limit the left out.
You've cut the trips in half, effectively.
Sure.
In, in, in theory, you've cut the trips.
Early on, sorry, early on in the meeting, there was a discussion about eliminating the exit movement that would go back into the neighborhood, and they agreed to that.
Has there been any discussion about putting in a sidewalk on Conduit?
I don't believe there has been today.
To keep the pedestrians safe while the cars are coming in and out, because Conduit is a pedestrian street half of it.
We can certainly look at the potential of that sidewalk.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. Wei Huang from one-five-nine Ball Avenue. I have one question. Have you looked at the number of pedestrians walking around the area?
Yes, so when we count, any intersection we're counting heads, so forty-six and Conduit, they were included in the count. It was minimal, remember, sir?
How about the number of jaywalkers crossing with forty-six?
The number of what? Jaywalkers crossing forty-six? Uh, no, I couldn't tell you that.
Oh, you didn't do your homework then. There are a lot. And the reason why I'm asking this question is because all it takes is that one impatient driver and one jaywalker happens at the same time, and there will be an accident.
Chick-fil-A is not responsible for jaywalkers, sir, with all due respect.
They should be taken into account.
Right, the traffic engineer should be able to identify these potential dangers.
No, I didn't hear it.
And one last question. Have you accounted for the number of accidents that happens along with forty-six?
Um, we haven't done a detailed crash analysis for forty-six here. Conduit, truthfully, doesn't get a lot of traffic currently, so I wouldn't expect there's many there.
Well, there, there has been many casualties around.
Don't tell us anything. Just ask questions.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julia Kacheva, from one-fifty-two Ball Avenue. So as you know, Ball Avenue and Parallel Street, it's like school zone, and all children's walking to school. It's not only walking, they have some exception sites. My question, if you approve this, whatever they ask, did you think about creating some sidewalks on Ball Avenue?
I think they just said that they would look at putting in sidewalks.
We're talking about sidewalk, potentially on our front edge. We're certainly not-
They were talking about-
On their property, they're gonna put sidewalks.
They were talking about Conduit Street. I am asking about Ball Avenue Street.
Check with the mayor's office tomorrow and ask him if they have any intentions of putting sidewalks in. It's not their responsibility to put sidewalks in.
Yeah, I'm asking you guys. You're responsible.
We're, we're, we're the zoning board. We have no, there's no administration up here. We're the zoning board, a group of volunteers. If you have a question about safety on the streets of walking, and you think you need sidewalks?
Yes.
You should go to the administration.
Even if we all wanted to do it, it means nothing.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chandu Borania, ninety-eight Hawkins Avenue, right on the corner of Conduit and Hawkins. May I ask a question of you, Mr. Idragan?
Sure.
I've known you for thirty-five years. You're a true professional. You've been serving this city and communities from your heart. I know that personally, because I've testified in this chair. I'm a professional engineer myself. Would you please not yell at my neighbors? You're raising your voice.
Pay attention. I will not yell if you pay attention.
They're not engineers. They are not engineers. They are normal people. They don't understand the process of this board. Please don't yell at them. Please- No, I don't have a question. I'm just asking you to be polite and professional to my neighbors. They're not engineers.
And ask your neighbors to follow the procedures. I'm gonna tell you, this is a quasi-judicial board. It's, it's not court, but it has to follow rules and regulations. And if you're gonna give testimony, we have to put you under oath.
I understand that, I understand.
And I'm gonna follow the rules to the nth degree, just like I have done for the last twenty-three years as chairman. And I'm sorry if I get a little gruff. It's my Sicilian temper, okay?
Please, because they get nervous. When, when they come here and you raise your voice, they get nervous. So please, let them speak. Thank you.
I'm not gonna let them speak. I'm gonna let them ask questions.
I got a quick question before the next person comes up. Um, do you have the measurements of the grass buffer from where the queuing lanes start in Parsippany to the roadway, and then the same question for the Marsh Plains site?
Uh, truthfully, I don't think I'm the right one to answer that.
Okay, well, whoever, and you may not have it right now, but if, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, my name is Paul Francis. I'm one-forty-one Hawkins Avenue. My question is, is you're saying that the traffic is gonna go back out onto forty-six and go to Baldwin Road? I live on Hawkins. There's cars that come down, turn on the Summit, go down whether Hawkins or Ball, okay? Where's that traffic gonna go? Are you saying that the traffic is gonna go straight to Baldwin? And turn around there? Because I don't see it happening.
I think he said, I think he said that's an option.
Yeah, if I'm understanding your question correctly, correct, if I'm wrong, there certainly, we're not proposing to change what anyone currently does without our development there. Uh, as far as people leaving the site, it depends where they're going. If they're going far enough north, it is faster to use Baldwin. If they're going into the residential development, like Parsippany residents between forty-six and Vale, it's conceivable those would be the people who might be tempted to do that. They still might not, because it is difficult to turn out of there, but they could, yes.
Okay. All right, so the people that are, just saying-
guy comes out, he's going to go to Ball, he's going to go to Beverwick. Because he wants to go to the other side of town. He wants to go down South Beverwick. I know for a fact he's not going to go up to Baldwin, turn around and go onto 46 going east.
And based on what traffic study that you got that comment to make?
Oh, I live on Hawkins.
You don't live on 46, do you?
I'm sorry?
You don't live on 46. That's why I'm asking you to not testify, to ask questions. And I'm trying to keep my voice low, okay? What's your next question? Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness? Please come forward. Please don't repeat a question that's already been asked.
But he's already been here.
Well, I'll give him another shot.
Manuel Godoy, 200 Ball. In case you get approved and everything goes well and you got a great success with the business and it results that it's going to be a disaster with traffic, what are we going to do?
Sorry, can you repeat the question real quick?
What is, wait a minute, what is the question?
Yeah, you get approved and you go ahead and move forward with this. Uh, if all the studies goes wrong and we're getting traffic jam in there, what are we going to do?
Studies are not wrong. Any other members of the public have any questions? Another witness? Let's take a five-minute break and then I'll call your next witness. Who's your next witness, Joe?
Mr. McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, okay. Is there any others?
In the property, uh, that our survey identified that there was a 15-inch RCT pipe uh, that was installed here, but it didn't, we didn't really, we didn't investigate it out there to figure out where it actually terminated to. Uh, so what we, what we anticipated, because there's another pipe, uh, that connects into the internal, uh, system as it does today. Uh, and so you asked us to basically go out there and kind of figure out where it actually goes, uh, so we could actually appropriate the drainage study. Uh, so we actually talked to the property owner there uh, and I guess he's, he's had this piece of property and his family about 50 years or so. Uh, and I guess years ago, as it kind of currently does today, uh, you know, kind of pools in the backyard. This entire standing water, uh, and his father actually installed a pipe uh, and crossed over two lots, so it went from his lot on Lot 8 to Lot 10. Uh, where it kind of daylighted, uh, somewhere around, I guess a little bit more east towards Condit. Now, that since has been, uh, pretty much filled in with mud, it's about 70% or so capacity. Uh, so basically what happens is, once it fills up, you know, it will kind of go through the land and eventually daylight on Route 10, or I guess Lot 10, and then continue east towards, uh, Condit Street. Uh, and then there's another depression that actually ends up on our piece of property, uh, which we already kind of accounted for with a yard inlet, uh, basically at the, sorry, I said like the T intersection of where the property kind of shuts out again. Uh, so our original drainage analysis already accounted for this area happening. Uh, we just kind of came to light that that is indeed what was happening.
Is there any need to clean the pipe that's out there?
So it's, it's off of our property, uh, and from what we, uh, kind of understand, you know, there is no significant drainage, uh, flooding or anything like that, uh, that is known to kind of exist. So in my opinion, no.
So there's no improvement or any change at all?
No, no change at all. There's actually a shed that's built over top of the pipe. Uh, it doesn't, uh, based on some pictures that my survey department took, it doesn't appear to be sinking into the ground or anything like that, so if that's, and that, basically the shed is here and then the pipe kind of daylights out here. Uh, you know, it's not kind of being undermined or anything like that. It doesn't seem like there's a significant.
So in your opinion, just to, they lie?
Kind of let it lie and just pick up the overland drainage area for, you know, significant storms.
And you eliminated the manhole that was in the original plan?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Supplemented with some landscaping.
While you're there, do you know where the school bus stop is, or bus stop?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. No further questions for this witness.
Any questions, Mr. Kelly, by the board? Any questions by members of the public of Mr. Kelly and the testimony he gave this evening? Please come forward.
Sir, for the record, just state your name and.
Jason Lane, 95 Hawkins Avenue. You're testifying about drainage?
Correct.
Uh, are you aware of flooding that happens on Route 46 during significant storms?
I mean, I think that's something maybe we should address.
46 floods at Condit.
Excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Kelly, would your site, if your site is properly drained, would it have any effect on the flooding of Route 46?
Uh, it would, however, it would actually decrease from existing conditions. Uh, like we've stated before, the existing site is almost maxed out in purpose coverage, around 94%. Uh, we're significantly reducing that to roughly 60% in purpose coverage. Uh, so in addition to just, you know, onsite collection, uh, just from a straight surface-to-surface comparison, uh, we will be making the condition better.
Okay, so you're saying that picture right there is all of that parking lot is 60% of that lot?
Roughly, yes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness? I hear nothing. See you then. Next witness.
Mr. McDonald. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Sir, right hand, you swore from testimony you're about to give before the board. Should we help you out?
Yes, I do.
For the record, your testimony is going to be planned.
Yes, it is.
All your licenses are going to be full force in effect. You've provided testimony before this board and other boards in this state of.
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chairman, he's been sworn in.
Go ahead, Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald, you're fully familiar with the application here this evening?
Yes, I am.
You've had an opportunity to examine the local ordinance of that master plan?
Yes, I have.
Wonder if you can compare this application to those documents to give us your findings?
Sure. Um, I think my testimony is going to be relatively brief because the relief the applicant is seeking is relatively minimal. Uh, substantial conformance of the requirements of your B2 zone district. Again, this is your highway development district. Uh, we're talking about a lot that is supersized in terms of the capacity of the site itself and the consideration of the B2 zone. Uh, so there is excellent carrying capacity for this use that is now before the board. Reminding the board that the applicant is not here seeking a use variance. So the normal, I'll say, long-winded testimony that I have to give for use variance is not something that you're going to hear this evening. It's a conditional use variance. Uh, there are 11 conditions associated with the fast food use in the B2 zone. Again, committed use subject to conditions. 11 conditions, all of them substantially met here but for the 1,000 square foot, I'm sorry, the 1,000 linear foot separation, not from residential, but from another fast food restaurant. So the applicant is not here asking for any relief whatsoever for separation from residential use. We are certainly at the edge of a business zone and a residential zone where there is always friction. Uh, the best thing we can do on the planning end, because zone lines are pencil thin, is create an effective buffer between, we have an applicant here that is putting forth a substantial commitment to integrate well with that adjacent neighborhood. You've heard the testimony. I'll call it a triple or quadruple layer of buffering between the subject site, subject business establishment and those residential uses. We have an exaggerated fence. The applicant is asking for relief, but the beneficiary of that privacy fence are the neighbors. Two feet higher than what's allowed by the code. It'll provide for a solid barrier between the two. Beyond that, we've got a double layer of evergreens. Beyond that, we've got lawn area. Beyond that, we've got shrubs uh, to screen the parking lot. So you've got a multi-layer buffer between the residential and the non-residential use. That's as good as it gets from a planning standpoint, uh, in terms of positive integration and sensitivity to a neighborhood. Importantly, reminding the board here as well, uh, this is, again, not only not a use variance, but it is not a user variance as well. We know the brand is popular. Uh, we cannot regulate popularity. We have an end user here, um, that certainly has planned for its popular brand. This is a well-tested model. You've heard about other sites here in New Jersey that are on three-acre sites. This is a three-acre site in a one-acre zone, again, with a very well-planned layout and a geometry that is perfect for what the applicant is proposing here. Excellent interior circulation. You just heard, um, extensive testimony from a traffic engineering standpoint. You've got a great body of evidence and testimony with respect to operational testimony and the confidence here that this site can be managed from a parking standpoint. All of that operational testimony can be hooked in as a condition of approval or conditions of approval to ensure that what this applicant is proposing here is what would carry for any brand that comes onto this site. So again, reminding the board, this is, this is pertaining to a use, not a user, but a specific user here that has well-planned with its 2,500 or so sites to accommodate for its own popularity. No relief being requested for the drive-through queue, no relief being requested for the parking. In fact, we've got exaggerated parking here, as you've heard, which does not trigger coverage relief. You heard about concerns about flooding in the area. Flooding is directly related to coverage. This is going to have substantial conformance with your coverage requirements here. In fact, greening up a site that is substantially paved over now. We're taking a site that is 55 years old and we're going to modernize it. We're going to bring it into conformance with contemporary planning design, certainly not what we saw 55 years ago. We know that the site is suffering now. It's got a multiplicity of buildings, um, very little landscaping, excessive pavement throughout, um, and a site that is suffering. We're looking at only 30% occupancy presently, 70% vacancy. Uh, it is a site that is dying a slow death, which is something from a planning standpoint is 100% contrary to what your B2 zone wants and what your master plan wants, which is a vibrant commercial corridor, a stable ratable base, economic development, and a site that would job, uh, produce job generation, including jobs for first-time local youth, which is exactly what this brand does. So there are many, many positives associated with this application. And because it's been so well-vetted, I think the board does what it normally does and asks the good questions of the applicant. We've had, we've had an applicant here that has responded in very positive ways to the extent that the site will flow, function, and operate safely, conveniently, and efficiently, which is all you could ask for, for any commercial land use. With that, um, opening, I'm just going to touch on some visuals that I brought for the board to underscore what I just said.
A4 now?
This is A4 now.
A4.
Hey, John, hey, John, could a small supermarket go into that property?
Yes, it could.
And that would, that would have significantly more traffic, wouldn't it?
Yes, it would, not to mention.
And that wouldn't even be before this board, would it?
It would be in front of the planning board.
Planning board, wouldn't even need a variance.
Right. And I think that's important for our public to understand. I understand they're laypeople, they're not experts, but one of the nice things about this application is it takes the unknown out of the equation. We have a well-thought-out plan. We have experts that have analyzed this uh, and have given sworn testimony under oath that, that it will function safely. There's a long list of things that could go on this site and I'll get to that as part of my testimony. The known here is that you are going to get an end user that will not operate on Sundays. The traffic generation from this site on Sundays, when those residential uses are in their backyards, is zero. I think that's very important from a planning standpoint as well, given the fact that, and I'll go through my list, but you could get the Wawa, the Quick Check here, the 24-hour operations, the lights of an auto dealership, Buffalo Wild Wings could go here and you'll get the exact opposite on a Sunday when football season is in full swing and games are going past midnight. So with that backdrop, we'll just go to, was this A4, Mr. Chairman?
A4.
A4. Very quickly, we'll just show and underscore what I said in my, in my planning report. I have a planning report that's about a year old now. Um, it's relatively short, but what I just gave you is generally a synopsis of what the report says. Stated July 12th, 2021, so almost a full year ago to the day. These exhibits are just going to underscore the key parts of the report from a planning standpoint. First, we're looking at a single tax lot, uh, Block 715, Lot 11.01. It says 11.1, but we know it's actually 11.01. Uh, that's just a typo from GIS. But the key point here, you can see Route 46 is lined with these commercial uses and everything you see on the north side are associated with this B2 zone district. This is the largest lot in the string of pearls, if you will, um, along Route 46. So the capacity is there to accommodate what the applicant is proposing. And I think a perfect match for this land use. Second page shows it's a developed site. As you've heard, it's 55 years old now. Um, any retail use, any commercial use after 55 years starts to get stale. We know that commercial and highway commercial in particular constantly needs to replenish itself to stay fresh in the public eye. We've seen it happen on the other side of the highway. We see it happen along the highway. This is a perfect opportunity for the board, a bird in the hand, if you will, to redevelop this site that is suffering and turn it over with a fresh new look, a very popular name brand that will certainly not only add value and quality to the site, but the corridor as a whole, your master plan talks about, uh, relooking at Route 46 and reinvesting in Route 46. And that's exactly what this applicant is proposing to do here. Taking those hodgepodge of buildings, which are now filled with a hodgepodge of uses. We've got 18 different storefronts presently there. This is going to unify the site and create a single land use. And importantly, as you've heard from a traffic standpoint, we've got multiplicity of access points into and out of the site presently. That's bad planning from a, from a land use standpoint because access points translates to conflict points. At any time we can consolidate, that's a good thing in the interest of promoting the free flow of traffic, which is one of the fundamental planning goals. You just heard that through a traffic engineer that this is going to take this site and make it work better from a traffic standpoint. Third page again underscores what I said before. Everything you see in red are non-residential land uses. Everything you see in gold or yellow are residential uses. We can't avoid the fact that we are at the edge of a residential zone here. And again, I think the applicant has done a fantastic job here of integrating with that adjacent neighborhood by putting in that extensive buffering along the perimeter of the property. Fourth page essentially shows what the established neighborhood pattern shows is that we've got a non-residential zone, the B2 zone, reminding the board, this is your highway commercial zone. This is where auto-centric uses are invited, recognizing that Route 46 is a service highway and this is going to be a service use, remove that service highway. Is that me?
No, it's Mr. Willis.
What's that noise?
Was that me?
Mr. Willis's paper was over there.
Oh, okay.
I was so Wisconsin mad.
Sorry for that pause there. Uh, the next series of shots are just aerial photographs. They're drone photographs that we actually took a year ago, but the site really hasn't changed. You get a sense of the limited landscaping along the frontage, the extensive pavement, uh, the older buildings there, again, 55 years old, that I believe have outlasted their useful life. And then the lack of buffering around the perimeter of the property. Improving that buffering with the adjacent neighborhood is a good thing from a planning standpoint. And certainly improving the landscape along Route 46 is also a good thing from a planning standpoint. Now, I said at the outset that the primary relief that the applicant is seeking here is a D3 conditional use variance, not a D1 for a wholly prohibited use, but for a use that is permitted subject to conditions. The main condition that the applicant is seeking relief from is to be within 1,000 feet of another fast food restaurant. However, as you heard, this is a divided highway, which essentially functions as two separate throughways. They don't interact. There's no crossover. If we look on the westbound side of Route 46, heading to the west, the nearest fast food restaurant is 3,500 feet away. That's your Taco Bell. If we go in the other direction to the east, we've got a Wendy's that's 2,000 feet away. So although there is a requirement of 1,000 feet, those uses are on the other side in the shopping center. There's the Panera there, which I actually testified on back in 2015. Needed the exact same relief that the applicant is seeking here to be within 1,000 feet of another fast food restaurant. We know that the Panera is there. We know that the Panera is there. That was approved and granted the same relief. And then, of course, we've got the McDonald's, which also went through reimaging and an upgrade as well, that I also testified on and needed the same exact relief here as well. So we've got not one, but two fast-food restaurants that have been granted the same exact relief that the applicant is seeking here on the other side of the highway. This applicant is a very good standalone location, I'll say equidistant from the Wendy's and the Taco Bell, and almost becomes a knockout, if you will, of other fast-food restaurants populating along the corridor because of that 1,000-foot separation requirement. So the fact that this particular site is oversized and in the middle of those two other fast-food restaurants, I think that is a particular attribute to this site that lends itself towards the positive criteria and why this site is actually well-suited for the use that's before you. And then just the last couple of frames here, just sort of spinning you around in the air with the drone to show the relationship of this site to the fast-food restaurants on the other side of the highway. In frame number six, you can see the Panera. There is no traffic interference or crossover between these two uses, and that's really the primary reason why we want to keep our fast-food restaurants 1,000 feet apart from each other, which is traffic-related, and you just heard traffic testimony that this will not cause a negative traffic impact. You can see all of those curb cuts along Route 46. In fact, all of that uncontrolled access, wide-open curb cut on the side street, which is actually going to be channelized as well. And then, of course, we see a view of what's happening on the other side of the highway in frame number seven, and what's happening on the subject site looking to the east in frame number eight. So that gives the board a sense of the physical context here that we're working with. And in terms of the positive criteria here, this is certainly going to be a positive repurposing of a site that could use help here. I believe that conditional use belief is warranted. In terms of serving the general welfare with a service use, that integrates very well with the commercial corridor. There is going to be a traffic safety benefit here as well. There is going to be an environmental benefit in terms of the greening of the site, substantial improvement, not only environmentally, but aesthetically, in terms of all of that landscaping that you saw and heard about during the last testimony, not only in the front, but in the rear as well. So aesthetically, functionally, this is all going to promote the positive criteria and be a positive redevelopment and upgrade of that which has been a longstanding part of the community here. All of that ties towards the purposes of the land use law, especially Purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens, and Purpose M, which is our planning goal for efficient land use. This is not a wooded site. This is a site that was previously disturbed, requires very little tree removal, and again, we think from an environmental standpoint, that's a good thing as well. In terms of the negative criteria, we've given you the reasons why we think being located within 1,000 feet of fast-food uses on the other side of the highway will have minimal, if any, impact on the intent and purpose of that conditional use requirement. Importantly, this is a zone here, the B2 zone, that does allow for a wide variety of uses, and taking you back to the list here, which we put on our report, think of all the flavors of retail that could go here, including convenience retail, which would operate on a 24/7 basis. It's a land use that needs to be accessible to the public. Contrarily, this is a land use that shuts down at night and shuts down on Sunday, which again, we think is a better integration than, a better zoning alternative than what the zone would allow. All types of restaurants are permitted here, brew pubs are permitted here, offices are permitted here, theaters, gyms, clubs, pharmacies, healthcare facilities, training schools, laundromats, dry cleaners, auto dealerships, car dealerships, and truck dealerships could go here. We know they like the bright lights. This is not going to have that same type of an impact. Urgent care facility could go here. We know what happened during the heart of COVID with the way those sites got rushed as well. Pet shops are allowed to go here. Auto repair facilities are permitted here as well. Picture Mavis or something along that lines with the banging and the clanging that would be associated with that particular land use. They're all allowed here. These are all uses that would be in front of your planning board, not in front of this particular board. A lumberyard. A lumberyard is a permitted use in the zone, not a permitted conditional use, is a permitted use in the zone. So a car wash, another permitted use here, so the tunnel effect and the line of cars, not substantially different from what the applicant is proposing here. We know what happens on the first nice day of spring, when everyone wants to get the salt off of their cars. So again, this is a site that is planned for activity. This is a site that is planned for commercial use. We think the applicant has given great care and consideration for making it function very well, and again, integrate very well with that surrounding neighborhood. For all of those reasons, I believe the relief can be granted here without creating any substantially adverse impacts on the public at large, and without any substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your B2 Zone District. We put a number of things here in the master plan that we believe are right on point in terms of what the applicant is doing here, in terms of the policy statements. We know the 2020 master plan is fresh, and it came after two years of extensive community outreach and community input to guide the orderly growth and future development of the community. The master plan recognizes the high vacancy rate, retail vacancy rate in Parsippany, which is more than double current vacancy rate of Morris County, the high rate of retail leakage. We're spending those out of the community, rather staying in here within Parsippany's borders. These are all from the master plan. These are not my words. These are what come out of the master plan. The master plan cites strengthening the community's retail base as one of its core goals for sustained economic development and stable ratables. Route 46 in particular is targeted as a key retail corridor in the community, and as I said, and as you've heard, the project will deliver a name-brand national retailer to this corridor that will certainly enhance its vitality and its viability. Right on point with these quotes in the master plan, "to implement land use strategies that respond to modern market demand and real estate trends," unquote, end quote. The township supports effort by office, retail, and other commercial property owners to implement improvements that will make their properties viable and competitive in the marketplace, unquote. For all of those reasons, the project will promote positive aesthetics, variety, efficient land use, and all of those goals that are, I'll say, baked into your master plan. I think it's pretty clear, the use meets the statutory criteria here. We do have some lower-level relief, C-level relief, which I'll touch upon very quickly. They were dealt in extensive detail by our site engineer. I think they are all reasonable and appropriate, and certainly fold into the C2 balancing test, whereby the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments. Importantly, there's that border canopy that's going to be in the front yard. The applicant is asking relief to have that setback at 28.5 feet, whereas 50 feet is the minimum requirement. This is an open-sided structure, and importantly, as the board well knows, a fueling station could go on the site, and a fueling canopy could be 15 feet away. So this is actually almost double from what a fuel canopy could be if this were to manifest as a Wawa or a Quick Check. The building height is going to be 20 feet, whereas 21.67 is what's proposed. So the applicant is asking the board to move on 1.67 feet, not related to the whole building, but to that decorative accent, that corner accent, which will promote brand identity and certainly not going to violate any planning purposes of height control, creating negative shadow effects or an obtrusive building, also offset by the setback of the building itself from the road, and we think goes towards the planning goal for positive aesthetics. We have a fence height in the back. It's proposed to be eight feet instead of six feet, which will enhance the privacy of the use, the enjoyment of those adjacent properties. We have a transitional buffer that is going to pinch down, and you can see it in the colored site plan. Conformance throughout the band, but a little narrow pinch point where we see the angle in the property line at the back that is going to neck down to 14.9 feet from the residential property line, whereas the minimum requirement would be 25 feet, plus the additional height relief for a total of 40 feet. So given the fact that we are proposing a solid fence and landscaping, we think the clear intent is met there as well. Likewise, the parking area in the rear at that pinch point is going to be 14.9 feet in the back, so interrelated relief. Relief related to the number of loading zones. You've heard the operational testimony and the site testimony, that a designated loading area is not needed, as we often hear with this type of a land use. The deliveries are off-peak, they're not long, and they will not interfere with the core operations and the flow of the site itself, and multiple opportunities for alternate circulation when that loading does occur. I think I've hit all the C relief, and then the last relief relates to the signs, and I'll just go back to the elevations to remind the board that the applicant is asking the board to move on three signs, whereas on a corner lot, two signs are the maximum that's allowed. These signs, the sign package is reasonable, it's tasteful, it's not excessive, and actually integrates very well with the overall building theme, and it's going to go on the three sides of the building that faces roads. We've got approaches from three vantage points here. So clearly, in the interest of providing clear and safe site identification and recognition and demarcation, we think the relief is appropriate, reasonable, and certainly satisfies the positive criteria of public safety and brand familiarity, without violating any of the planning purposes of why we try to eliminate signage, overbranding. This is not going to be overbranding. It's not going to create visual clutter, but again, integrate very nicely with the overall package. With that-
Well, I want to just interrupt you there, Mr. McDonough, and remind you that there is one additional sign, there's a directional sign on Route 46 that contains stylized logos of Chick-fil-A, and under local ordinances, that is considered a separate identification sign, not a directional sign, but another sign, so there's actually four signs.
That is correct. Yes, and again, a little bit-
We would think that that would be important, to identify the entrance of Chick-fil-A to travelers on Route 46.
Right. Not only roadside recognition, but also building identification as well. It's all part of that package that goes towards enhanced safety here. We don't want anyone on 46 taking a sudden turn or sudden stop. We might give the motorin' public safe advance notice of those approaches to the site.
Thank you.
Is the freestanding sign okay?
I have a note here, I think we still need this relief. The bottom of the freestanding sign shall not be closer than 10 feet from the ground level. We're looking for five feet, but that's to the bottom of the reader board.
Right.
And I think that's the package of relief.
That's the reader board, isn't it?
That's the reader board, yes.
Yes. It's not really the traffic view.
No, it's not going to block any lines of sight.
But again, local regulations are interpreted as covering that sign.
So in closing, first of all, from a practical planning standpoint, this application is very good for Parsippany. This will certainly improve a site that could use help. The key points that came out during my testimony underscore, no operation on Sunday, very high vacancy right here. This is going to fix that problem. This is not a residential development here. This is going to be a commercial development. I think that's fresh. Parsippany as well, you've seen plenty of residential in the last couple of years, and again, a very excellent fit for this particular site, which is what all land use planning strives to be. Most importantly, the statutory tests are all met here based on all of the evidence. I absorb all of the testimony and my testimony, and based on that foundation, from a planning standpoint, I certainly will conclude that this is consistent with good planning principles and meets the statutory criteria for the board's approval. Therefore, approval is one.
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. I have no further questions for the board.
Questions by the board?
I kind of have one question, I think. Mr. McDonough, taking into account the fact that this particular Chick-fil-A borders on a residential neighborhood, a neighborhood that will more than likely get increased traffic as a result of the Chick-fil-A being there, what's the overall impact you think that this Chick-fil-A is going to have on that residential community?
Well, I think a lot of that falls on the traffic engineering testimony, that the impact on that neighborhood will not be substantial. And bear in mind, you have connectivity here with those roads. Any vehicle could go over those roads. I gave you the long list of land uses that could go there. So whenever we look at the impact of this land use, we have to look at what's contemplated in the zone code, in the zone plan. The zone plan invites traffic to this particular site without any sort of controls that would prohibit traffic from going through that residential neighborhood. So we have to look at the delta, and I don't see the traffic generation here, the delta, as being substantially different than what could be under the zone plan, based on the traffic testimony that I've heard.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of Mr. McDonough? Please come forward. Remember, you're asking questions of Mr. McDonough on the testimony he's giving this evening. Please use the microphone.
The question I have is, you led me to believe that-
Your name, please? Please identify yourself.
My name is Beau Okuyan. I'm at 130 Hawkins Avenue.
Thank you.
From the statements that you made, you made me believe that this is the best thing that ever happened or could happen to Parsippany on Route 46. For you to be able to say that, did you analyze or study any other sites?
Me personally, no. I studied the zone plan.
No, you made the statement, so I'm just asking you, did you study any other sites?
I will tell you, the short answer is no, I did not.
Thank you.
And the longer answer is, I don't have to, as part of the test.
No, there are two other sites you could have studied.
Again, availability of alternate sites is not-
No question. Next.
Manuel Godoy, 200 Ball Avenue. 1,000 feet is linear to the parking lot or to the corner of the building?
1,000 feet is from property line to property line.
It doesn't matter, it's in opposite of the Route 46?
According to the zone plan, no, it does not.
Parking lot to parking lot to McDonald's is 1,000 feet between them?
When you're talking about the Panera and the McDonald's?
And Chick-fil-A.
I don't know if the McDonald's is within 1,000 feet, but the Panera certainly is.
Isn't the parking lot-
Parking lot is.
It's parking lot. It doesn't have to be the building, right?
Right.
It's that big, long parking lot.
Right. I'm trying to remember if McDonald's-
Somebody gave testimony, 340 feet. Early on in the- Yeah, it doesn't have to be from building to building, it has to be from property line to property line. So if you go across the street to the shopping center, across the street, it's only a few hundred feet. That's the measurement.
The ordinance does not, if you have a divided height, even if you are on Route 80, either side, still the ordinance doesn't consider separation.
Anybody else have a question?
I have no further.
Mr. O'Neill, it's 9:51.
Oh, go ahead, yes, go ahead.
I get it, the latest report is July 14. There was waste disposal, I think we dealt with that, it's going to be off-peak. The Evergreens, they were all raised to eight feet in the back or more. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
The site lighting, the engineers let us talk about it, there needs to be a note on the plan. Do you agree to that?
We do agree to that.
The operational hours, you testified again today, and you would agree if you approved that there would be no business on Sunday.
Yes, correct.
And the last one was about Condit Street, and we've spent two hours on Condit Street.
We agree, no left turn.
Correct. I assume you're going to agree, whatever this bus stop-
Subject to sidewalk, he gave it a fifth.
Yeah. Whatever this bus stop is, nobody seems to know exactly where it is. When somebody raised their hand that they do know.
The school bus stop that's off the property.
We'll get it straight down to the details. Meaning, if it's affected by your driveway, you're going to assist in relocating.
Doesn't appear to be, but we'll certainly take a look.
We don't know. Yes, we don't know. Okay.
Where are we on sidewalks on Condit?
If it fits, we'll put it.
If it fits, we'll put it, we've got to take a look at it. We don't know if we have enough room on the side to see where the turn is, where the driveway is.
Yeah.
Do I not have enough room?
No room.
To locate it on our property. And we have sidewalks in the front because there's plenty of room in front.
What do they have next?
He's done?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Believe it or not, Mr. O'Neill, the next open meeting is December 7th, okay? I am proposing a 7 o'clock meeting on August 3rd. Now, if I could get the board to agree to a 6:30 meeting, I would start the meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
And I have to... How's that, how's that sit?
That works for me.
I won't be here first day.
You'll be here.
People commute, can't, I can't...
I'll be in London.
Oh, good. So you won't make 6:30?
No.
All right, I, I...
I think...
Show a hand, show a hands for, wait a minute, we got, we still have Casey?
Casey, Dave.
And, Dave, who could listen to the tape? Right?
Yeah, but I think Dave can hear everybody's...
Hmm?
I don't know.
All right, 7 o'clock, August 3rd, 7 o'clock. You're going to give us an extension through the end of August?
Yes, we will.
And that will be without further notice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, motion to carry this case to, well, I'm going to August 3rd with proper extensions and with no additional notification. Thank you. All in favor?
Public comment.
What?
That will be for public comment, by some nation. We have no further questions.
Yeah, it'll be for public comment and hopefully a conference. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to carry this case to August 3rd at 7 o'clock. It's going to give you an opportunity to make a statement. As I've been telling you all night, I'm going to swear you in, and you can make a statement. Now, the one thing I'm going to caution everybody, I'm going to say it tonight, I'm going to say it again on August 3rd. When you make a statement, there is no personal attacks. I don't want anybody saying to the owner of this, of this, the owner of the application that he doesn't live there, or he doesn't do this, that's not, that's not part of the deal, okay? We're basing our, our, this whole...
Process.
Process, thank you, is based on whether or they should be granted a variance, and primarily for this 1,000 feet. So I look forward to seeing all of you on August 3rd, I'm sure you'll come back, and hopefully we will conclude everything that evening.
Thank you.
Any other business, Nora?
No other business.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Good night, I sent that thing. Yeah. Just already do well.